We'll wait till Vice Mayor gets here. He's at difficulty with the door. Getting for you. Okay, now I will call this meeting to order of the Melkity City Council for March fourth, two thousand and twenty five to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over fifty languages with the worldly accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays. By scanning the QR code located in the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner, you can access that. So back to today's agenda, City Clerk Guzzetta, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Here.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lam.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lian.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here. So before we adjourn to closed session, Acting City Attorney Creach, please brief the public on the closed session items for today.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight you have one item on closed session. It is related to public employee appointment and hiring pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B one. The employee position is interim city manager.
Thank you very much. And so now I will call for a public comment on the closed session item. Are there any cards?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Is there anyone from the public saying none? We will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, welcome everyone. So, uh, close session, uh, announcement, uh, Christopher. Your attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. There is nothing to report out of closed session at this time.
Okay, so now everyone please rise to do the pledge of allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Oh, thanks for putting that. And so, uh, every month we select one per, one council member to do the, uh, invocation and this, this month is my turn, so. You know, I'm a woman of faith, so I have chosen to read, uh, Psalm 23rd. And it goes like this. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leadeth me beside the still waters. He restoreth my soul; he leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil; for thou art with me, thy rod and thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies; thou anointest my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Amen. Thank you, everyone. So now we'll move on to presentations. And we have a couple of presentations to give out if the council members would join me on, down below. It's a beautiful Tuesday night with some beautiful people here in the audience. So fir- first one we have is for Bill Hare. Where are you? Bill, come on up. So we are going to give this special commendation to Bill Hare. He is a musician and he also has his own studio. And me, I'm a musician, so this is really special for me because, so, so we're going to give this commendation to him. Uh, so on behalf of the Melpita City Council, we, Mayor Carmen Montano and Councilmember Evelyn Chua, extend our heartfelt congratulations to Bill Hare on his Grammy Award for the Best New Age Ambient or Chat Album. Oh, this is wonderful. So, so the, he has, he, he's been fe- featured in the iconic, uh, track Baba Yetu. His expertise has shaped numerous Grammy nominated projects and award-winning productions, showcasing his passion, innovation, and unwavering commitment to excellence in music. A true visionary, Bill continues to inspire and elevate the world of music. So on behalf of the entire city council and, um, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Evelyn Chua, council member, she's, she was a vice mayor, sorry. So council member Chua and myself are commending this to you.
Hey, thank you. And I'd like you to say a few words.
Well, I actually didn't get to go down to the Grammys this year to pick it up, so I'll just say, I'd like to thank the Academy. But thank you. It's been, uh, been an honor, uh, working in Melpitas for the last, uh, thirty-five years now. And a lot of, lot of productions and, and things from movies and other things that you would not know, uh, happened in Melpitas.
Right, so Bill, we're gonna take a picture with you.
Thank.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we also have here a proclamation for the Youth Arts Month. And we have, um, Bernadette Sagarino from Santa Clara County Office of Education. She will accept the proclamation. So the month of March is recognized as the Youth Arts Month in the state of California and is an annual celebration to emphasize the value of art education for all children while encouraging, encouraging support for the art program in schools. The city of Melpitas is committed to supporting the arts and to inspire and prepare students for success. So please join me, Mayor Carmen Montano and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming the month of March 2025 as Youth Arts Month in the city of Melpitas. So. Congratulations. The words as well.
Let me take a picture first.
I have a few words for all of you. Uh, of course, Magandang Gabi sa inyong lahat. Um, Agyamanakunay for this award. And on behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, this has been, uh, an amazing journey for all of us to be proclaimed and to be acknowledged, March being the Arts Month. And so with this, we truly are so immensely, um, thankful and proud of the work that the Santa Clara County in partnership of Melpitas to have this opportunity to again engage our students and elevate their brilliance through arts. So, thank you so much.
You know, arts is very, very important and, uh, just for your information, we are, our city is going through, uh, an arts master program right now, uh, developing our arts master plan. So it's gonna be exciting to see murals and there's throughout our city. It's gonna be really nice. So you're gonna have to keep in touch with us so we can maybe partner. Great, thank you. Um, the next one is the Proclamation for Women's History Month. Uh, Lorene Patterson and Noreen Kinohi will accept the proclamation. And we also have, um, a certificate to present in recognition of Women's History Month. So Women's History Month is a time to honor the accomplished and visionary women who helped build our country, our country and pay tribute to the trailblazers who envisioned a future with endless possibilities for all its women and girls. The theme for Women's History Month 2025 is moving forward together. Women educating and inspiring generations honoring the profound impact of women as educators, mentors, and leaders who uplift and empower future generations. Please join me, Carmen Montano and the Melpita City Council in proclaiming the month of March as Women's History Month in the city of Melpitas. And we have Lorene and Noreen. This one's for you, Noreen. And this is for you, Lorene. I like how it rhymes, Lorene and Noreen. These are your proclamations and thank you. And you, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna take pictures first?
Okay.
Take pictures and then, and then we'll have you guys play a little, with Bill.
Thank you, city of Melpitas. We are very honored. Um, I just wanna repeat a quote right here from Estee Lauder. "I didn't get there by wishing for it or hoping for it, but by working for it. And together, we can make history and continue to break barriers and, um, for future generations. And we're just really honored to like accept this and have the first Women's History Flag Raising Event on Friday, so hope you all can come. Um, I'll make this short and simple. Um, when I started Noreen's Dance Collaborative, we came in to do something to help the youth in the community. But over time, we expanded where we wanna empower our children, empower everybody. Um, so I'm actually really humbled because I never expected to give, receive all these certificates. I was just doing something because I'm a, I'm an educator and I work with young children. So to me, this is, um, breathtaking. So I appreciate it. Again, when I got this email like, hey, we're gonna recognize you. I'm like, for what? Um, because it's something I do every day, so I'm really humble. So I appreciate it and thank you. Um, I'm just trying to spread mental health awareness, empower women, empower children. That's what I do as far as our dance organization and as far as what I do for a living. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll be there this Friday in celebration to raise that woman's flag. And there's another one, a Women's History Month certificate. And I'm not sure who will be accepting this one. Um, so this is, uh, it's the city of Melpitas presents the commendation to Show Up and Love Women's History Month Flag Raising Ceremony. So it's gonna be you again. And so on behalf of the Melpita City Council, I, Mayor Carmen Montano, would like to commend Show Up and Love for hosting the Women's History Month Flag Raising Ceremony on Friday, March 7th at the Melpitas Sesar Chavez Plaza in Melpitas. And thank you for doing this for the community. We're gonna get a double.
All right. Just right.
So much.
All right.
Forum. Now let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. So please note that oral public comments may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. Um, with, and the limit, limited time will be two minutes. So call for speakers.
I have a public speaker card from Voltaire Montemayor.
Welcome, Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you, the mayor, vice mayor, members of city council. Assistant city manager and stuff. Yeah, I'm, I'm just piling up, uh, these presentations. Um. I love music, of course. Make me dance, make me sing. The, the youth art, um, is making bulldozer out of clay. When I was young, then I considered as an art, used to be, we called it art and science in school. Now, uh, it's not really the beef or not, I'm not believing us men. But women got the power, um, right in front of us, the mayor and all the ladies, ladies around. My mom, I'm not here without my mom's care. My wives, um, work in the hospital, my sisters, my nieces, my daughters-in-law, um, they like me, uh, we love each other. And all the women in the world. The other night, a very strong woman, a homeless woman, she wanted to sleep in the church, but eventually I decided to call the police because, uh, we agreed that call the police, mister, and I don't wanna leave unless you call the police because I don't have anywhere to go, to go home that night. So I called the police, they're in rush and they're on time. Um, yeah. So, uh, she's in good shape and imagine she thanked me, instead of getting mad at me, she thanked me very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments from the public?
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
So with that, um, I will go ahead and go read the So with that, I will go ahead and go read the Melpita's Code of Conduct. Actually, will somebody else do that?
Sorry, mayor, conflict of interest first.
Oh, that's right. I seen your name here, so that way, I thought Harry's done it. So moving on to the announcements of conflict of interest and campaign contributions, we have city attorney Chris Creach.
Thank you, mayor. I asked the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm none.
I further ask the mayor and each council member to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Let the record reflect, no report conflicts. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Now we have councilmember Chua who would like to say the code of conduct.
Thank you, mayor. Melpita City Council Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Chua for reminding us. And now moving on to the approval of the agenda, moving on. I will ask anyone who has any changes before making a motion to the agenda. Anyone? We have councilmember Lynn.
Move to approve the agenda submitted.
So we have councilmember Lynn move the agenda and then we have vice mayor Barbara DiO who has seconded. And so now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm aye. And now, thank you for that. And now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Staff, do you have any changes to the consent calendar?
No, mayor, we do not have any changes to the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And councilmembers, do you have any changes? We have councilmember Chua.
Seeing none, move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second? It was approved by councilmember Chua and seconded by vice mayor Barbara DiO. So now we'll call for the vote.
We need to call for public comment.
Public comment. Public comment. Anyone from the public?
I have no public speaker cards.
Okay, seeing none, now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm aye, thank you very much. And now we're moving on to public hearings. So we have our assistant city manager, Matt Cano. And welcome, Matt. This is our first time you're taking, you're on the dais. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, mayor. Mayor, vice mayor and city council members. I'm very excited to introduce our Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives, Alex Andrade, who will talk to you about an exciting partnership opportunity, which approves an economic development agreement, which would ask for, request your approval to adopt a resolution approving an economic development incentive agreement with Rivian LLC for the operation of an industrial facility located at 755 Yosemite Drive. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Andrade for the presentation.
Thank you, acting city manager, Cano. Good evening, everybody. My name's Alex Andrade. I serve as the city's Director of Economic Development and Strategic Initiatives. I am really excited about being here tonight specifically because we're bringing for consideration a tax agreement with Rivian that will result in substantial revenues to the city to help with our mission of providing essential services for the community, improving our long-term fiscal health and sustainability and providing quality jobs. So with that, let's go to the next slide, please. So what you see here is the meeting agenda. I'm not going to talk about every topic, but I do want to turn your attention to the last bullet point. This is very much a partnership. We have been working with Rivian in this partnership opportunity for close to, I think, about eight months. And I do want to say that the partnership means that we have Rivian representatives here. Hannah Stenweg, Lucas Dobbins, Tommy Correo, Mauricio Aguila are here and they're here to present a few slides and will answer any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. So this is very much a business attraction effort. And we have been hearing the city council talk about business attraction, revenue generation and employment opportunities. So, and recently in June, or January, rather, you affirmed your city council priorities, one of which is economic development and job growth. I'm not gonna talk to every bullet point here, but I do want to highlight a few key implementation actions. So the first one is business attraction efforts meet the economic development strategy and specifically its goal of creating a resilient and a sustainable economy by creating emerging technology and innovation, which results in investment and growth opportunities. And then second, related to our general plan, we're fortunate enough to have an economic development element within the general plan. And specifically, that economic development implementation action is two slash four, facilitate development projects that provide sales tax revenues. And then lastly, I want to highlight the fact that you, as a city council, approved the city's climate action plan for circular and green economy just a couple of years ago. And so several of those implementation actions that are outlined on the screen meet those goals. Next slide, please. So a little bit of background on Rivian. They're an American electric vehicle company. They're headquartered in Irvine. They've been around for about 16 years. They're continuing to grow. They design and manufacture EV vehicles. Their flagship models, you may have seen one of the Rivians out front. And so their flagship models include the pickup truck, which is the R1T. There's SUV, which is the R1S, and commercial vans aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Just about a year ago, they introduced several new models. They're known as the R2, R3, and the R3X. They're going to be a little smaller in size and a little bit more economical in price. They have a pretty significant workforce in the United States with about 4,000 employees here in California. They've attracted some pretty significant investment from major partners like Amazon. You see the Amazon delivery truck there. They have a partnership with Amazon for 100,000 vehicles or commercial vans, I should say. And I think about 20,000 of those have already been delivered worldwide. And you probably have seen these on the streets of Melpitas. I checked in with Amazon representatives and we currently have about 110 of these commercial vans in and around Melpitas for deliveries. Also, the partnership with Volkswagen I want to bring up. I think that's really important. They've announced an investment of $5.8 billion through 2027 through a joint venture agreement. This happened, I believe, in November of 2024. And thankfully, Rivian is growing and they're in the expansion mode. They have looked at several Bay Area locations, one of which, of course, is Melpitas. And I'm really excited to share that they're very interested in occupying a space at 755 Yosemite Drive, which is located in our heavy industrial area. And the next slide, please, you'll see a visual of the site and, and the location. So the building size is just under 97,000 square feet. It's located at 755 Yosemite Drive, as I just indicated. In terms of our zoning district, it's known as the heavy industrial area under M2. And the general plan designation is manufacturing. The lot size is just a little over seven acres. And I'll talk about this in just a little bit in terms of highest and best use. Next slide, please. So here is information related to Rivian's original letter of intent, which included the key business terms that you see on the screen. They're interested in establishing what on the screen says LMH, which stands for Last Mile Hub at 755 Yosemite Drive for service and delivery, as well as ancillary uses and leases and other activities for an initial seven-year term. The Last Mile Hub is the place where service, delivery, and sales and lease operations would take place in Melpitas to serve Bay Area customers. The letter of intent indicated that they would maintain at least 25 jobs. And the original letter of intent referenced a tax sharing agreement whereby Rivian would receive 65% of the sales tax revenues and the city would receive 35% of sales tax revenues. And Rivian, at that point in time, was interested in a reimbursement plan of up to $300,000 for equipment, as well as their tenant improvements to the facility. Next slide, please. Now what you have in front of you is the actual key terms of where we've landed with the agreement. So the proposal includes an economic development incentive agreement, known as the agreement. And this would allow Rivian to operate their Last Mile Hub at 755 Yosemite Drive for business activities. The proposed tax sharing agreement will result in substantial sales tax revenues and new job opportunities. And I'm going to get into that a little bit in a slide that's coming up next. In terms of the term, earlier, we talked about seven years, but where we've landed is an eight-year term that would commence in early 2026. They then are working with the current property owner for the potential of exercising a five-year option. So if that happens, and we hope that it does, it would allow staff and the city council to negotiate for another five years for this sales tax sharing agreement. This next point, point of sale, which is really one of the most important components of this, the point of sale designation is the most important term on the screen right now. And it designates the site location as the point of delivery where taxable sales transactions on business activities would take place. Moving forward, Government Code Section 53083 requires that public agencies, well, if we can just go back slide, yes. My apologies about that. I meant to say moreover, but under the Economic Development Subsidy Report, the state requires that the Economic Development Subsidy Report be posted on the city's website. That took place on Friday, February 21st. And the other requirement is to hold a public hearing, which is exactly what we're doing right here. The land use entitlements, we talked earlier about the location being in the, the heavy industrial district. And I think the only thing I will touch upon that right now, rather, is that today's action for this incentive agreement does not indicate or provide Rivian any city permits as they are solely responsible for obtaining all necessary permits, as well as paying all applicable fees. I, I think too, it's important that, that our planning director, Jay Lee, has indicated that the primary use of auto storage and repair is permitted by right in that area. And lastly, under this last bullet point, defaults and termination, Rivian may discontinue business activities at any time and the city's remedy is to seize the sales tax sharing agreement. The city and Rivian will make a legitimate and good faith effort to meet and confer for any resolutions. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're talking about the share, the sales tax sharing component. And what you see on the screen has to do with both percentages and actual sales tax dollars projected and estimated. So the chart talks about years one through three, where Rivian would receive 35% of the sales tax revenues that are generated from the site. And the city would now receive 65%. Years four through eight would be a 50-50 split. And so you'll notice that compared to the original letter of intent, the city's position has actually improved in this respect. The tax sharing agreement, those bullet points indicate the actual estimated dollar amounts. Years one and two, again, 35% for Rivian and 65% to the city. Those are the same estimated amounts. A little over $1 million to Rivian and a little less than $2 million estimated for the city. Year three, you see an increase for both the, the city as well as Rivian. And the reason for that is that for years one and two, it's estimated that 6,000 vehicles would be sold or leased. Commencing in year three, that 6,000 estimated annual amount increases to 10,000 vehicles, which is why you see that increase to the city at approximately $3.2 million. The years four through eight, we moved to a 50-50 split and then we would share the 12.3 million dollars that's on the screen. So the estimated revenue for the city over the eight-year term is $19.4 million. That's an average of 2.43 million through the eight-year term. And the estimated revenue for Rivian over that same term would be approximately $16.2 million estimating up. The estimated total over the eight-year term of the agreement would be approximately $35.5 million. It's important to note that the estimated payments are based on sale and lease volume projections, based on future production and delivery estimates. At a high level, Rivian takes long-term volume forecasts that account for their EV market or accounts for EV market growth. And then their Rivian market share, as well as manufacturing capacity. Rivian uses a percentage of that for Northern California, using a historical graphic mix. And in addition, ongoing external and internal factors may change Rivian's projections. For today, as I mentioned earlier, we're estimating that 6,000 vehicles will be sold or leased annually for the first couple of years through 2026 and 2027. And then moving on to 2028 and thereafter, estimated at 10,000 vehicles annually. Next slide, please. "The agreement, if approved by the city council, will cultivate a strong, stable, and diverse local economy." These are words that come out of our economic development strategy. Partner with Rivian will allow, allow for supporting a growing business sector that is environmentally conscious and creates green jobs. The public benefits are listed there on the screen, as well as positive externalities. I won't go through both of these, but I do want to turn your attention to the last two. The Innovation District, you, you know that we are going to start pretty aggressive business attraction efforts. The three business sectors that we are going to attract include bioscience, automotive technology, and artificial intelligence. Having the, having Rivian here would help with business attraction efforts. The Prestige would really help us attract auto tech, as well as artificial intelligence businesses. It would be the first EV dealership in Melpitas. Earlier, I talked about the site measuring just a little over seven acres. And I think it's really important to talk about the highest and best use and really a lucrative one. We're talking about seven acres that would be utilized for this EV dealership, as well as other business activities. But the fiscal long-term sustainability that comes from this gets to the, the old adage that you hear me talk about often, which is preserving and protecting employment lands. This allows for that. I think it's really important to call that out. Next slide, please. This next slide is just for reference. These are photos of the Last Mile Hub that's located in Blaveld, it's in New York. You'll see that the top two photos depict a very clean shop. It's a tech company, so you're not going to see greasy, greedy, or gritty, I should say, auto-related uses there. And we're very excited about the opportunity, obviously, of, of welcoming people to come pick up their vehicles here. Next slide, please. The next slide will talk about both the fiscal impact and next steps. The fiscal impact, I think it's important to note that the city will not make any direct upfront investment of public funds to Rivian. If the city receives sales tax revenues, starting in 2026, quarterly payments will be made, will be sent, rather, to Rivian for the Last Mile Hub business activities. Total sales tax revenue over eight years, as I mentioned earlier, is estimated at $35.5 million. Rivian would receive $16.1 million and the city would receive $19.4 million based on the estimated projections and volumes that were on the screen earlier. The estimates, the estimates and projections will not be used for financial forecasting. And in terms of next steps, we are hopeful that you will move forward with staff's recommendation, which means we would execute the executive, or rather, the economic development incentive agreement, as well as sign the resolution. as well as sign the resolution. Construction drawings at 75% have already been shared with the city. Our planning department, fire, life safety, fire prevention, as well as building and land development are working with Rivian. And at this point in time, Rivian is working with the Santa Clara County's Department of Environmental Health. And we are also looking forward to a lease agreement being executed by the property owner and Rivian. I do want to take time before I close here, this type of to say that this type of partnership does not happen very often, and it takes a real team to make it happen. So I want to say thank you to the Office of Economic Development Team for conducting due diligence, research, pro forma, development, among many other critical aspects of this project. So thank you to Michael Thomas, Nat Sandoval and Cal Zubair. Also want to thank members of the building department, including Bill Todd and Betty Chan, as well as Planning Director Jay Lee, as it relates to the development services process. And lastly, but certainly not, not last, is special thanks to our acting city attorney, Christopher Creach, as well as our finance director, Luis Cofresi Howe, for the partnership in negotiating what we believe is a really strong deal for the city and executing the pertinent documents that are attached for, that are attached to your agenda. The three of us are here to answer any questions you may have. The next slide is the recommendation slide. I will then bring up the Rivian team to share information. So the recommendation here is to conduct a public hearing, as required by government section code 53083 for the Economic Development Subsidy Report. And number two is to adopt a resolution approving the Economic Development Incentive Agreement by and between the City of Milpitas and Rivian LLC for the operation of an industrial facility located at seven five five Yosemite Drive here in Milpitas and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute the agreement. I'm going to stop there. I'll say thank you. I'm going to look to the Rivian partners to come up and say a few words. Both of these microphones are live. You both want to come up, Hannah and Lucas?
Thank you, Alex, for that presentation. I do want to open it up to the public hearing first, but actually, we can probably do reverse it. You'll have any comments?
Go to the next slide, please.
Okay, go ahead and show the slides in.
Great. Hello. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi, Mary Montano. Nice to see you all, members of the council. My name is Hannah Steinweg, and I lead our policy and regulatory affairs across the West. I've had the pleasure of working with Lou, Alex, Chris and others on this agreement over the past eight months. And what's interesting is part of the agenda earlier that you just kind of unilaterally approved was talking about the Cal Cities Conference and your attendance. And that's where a really significant conversation happened with the city at that conference that really kicked off the partnership that we have executed here today, or hopefully will execute here today, that has absolutely been marked with a lot of trust, responsiveness and collaboration. Rivian is an all American EV only manufacturer. Our mission is to keep the world adventurous forever. And we think to build the world that will enable our kids and our kids' kids to explore and see the natural places that we've all been able to see. We must transition our transportation system to a more sustainable form of energy. And this requires collaboration across the public sector, across the private sector. And this partnership is one way in which we can really live out our mission. As Alex pointed out, we have the R1T, which is our flagship product. That was the first all electric truck to market, where we we rolled that off the line in 2021 at our manufacturing facility in Normal, Illinois. It's an old Mitsubishi plant that we renovated. And so we are contributing to American jobs here in the United States. We then followed with the R1S, which is the SUV, the electric delivery van. And we are, we will be manufacturing three new models that are smaller and at a lower price point to ensure that everyone can access an electric vehicle. We not only manufacture electric vehicles, we also have our own charging network. It's, it's, it is necessary for the transition to an electric transportation system to support those vehicles with proper charging infrastructure that is reliable. We also have a fairly large footprint in California to support what will happen in Milpitas. We have over eight service centers that will service the vehicles that are being delivered here in Milpitas. We also have over five, what we call spaces, they're showrooms. And this will enable more sales in Northern California, so that more vehicles will be delivered here in Milpitas. And Milpitas will realize more sales tax. When we kicked off the search to look at where we wanted to locate a last mile hub, there were quite a few factors that we needed, that we needed to satisfy. And Milpitas satisfied all of those requirements. This is the second last mile hub in all of California. And when California represents currently our biggest market, there is really an unlimited, you know, possibility for deliveries and collaboration between Rivian, the city of Milpitas. This agreement is is a testament to the city's commitment to supporting clean transportation solutions and economic growth. We look forward to a successful partnership that benefits not only Rivian, but also the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lucas Stobins. I am the senior real estate lead at Rivian. Just wanted to echo what Alex and Hannah have said. We appreciate the partnership that you all have built with us thus far. And we look forward to a continued successful partnership with you guys long term. Here to answer any questions you might have about the project itself or? Yeah, we can go through the slides as well.
Yeah, you can go through the slides. I, yeah, next slide. So yeah, this is our mission of keeping the world adventurous forever. Next slide. I hit on a few of these points. We have 16,000 employees globally. We've built actually over 120,000 vehicles since we started production in 2021. And really, customers have been responding quite well to the product. We're the number one most loved automotive brand, actually, two years in a row, according to Consumer Reports. Next slide. I'm glad that this slide is here just to really emphasize where Rivian's current health is in terms of our profitability. A few weeks ago, we announced Q4 of 2024 that we reached gross profit over 170 million. And then the joint venture that we executed with Volkswagen, as well as a Department of Energy loan for our Georgia plant, which will manufacture the R2, will come out to over a $10 billion capital investment over the next five, five or so years. Rivian is a car company. We are also a technology company. And because of that, we are able to license our software that we develop all in house because we're fully vertically integrated. A lot of that software, actually, all of it is is developed in Palo Alto, just a few miles away. Next slide. This is the R1T that I mentioned earlier, the R1S in the middle, and then the delivery van at the end. Next slide. And then these are the three models that will be coming out over the next few years that will, when the average cost of a new vehicle is 50,000 and the R2 is starting at 45, it will offer a lot more choice in the market that currently does not exist. Next slide. And then this is specific Rivian stats to California. California is a very important market for us. Northern California actually is a very important market to us. And this is really where we want to call home, as you know, the majority of these vehicles will be delivered here, here in the city. Next slide. And we can take any questions from the council.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Does anyone have any questions? We have a, actually, let me go to public comment first. Members of the public that would like to make any comments? Thank you.
I have a public speaker card from Michael Tsai.
Welcome, Michael Tsai.
Thank you, Mayor Montano. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Michael Tsai. Served on the Milpita School Board before and worked with economic development. First off, I want to say great job to Alexandria for recruiting high tech businesses. I think this is really vital for Milpitas that we continue to pursue innovation and economic revitalization. I'm speaking here because this space of electric vehicles, autonomous vehicles and AI is something I have a lot of experience in, studied transportation at the Mineta Transportation Institute. And in recent years, myself with our AI work and startups, we've actually been analyzing electric vehicles and AI vehicles. Rivian actually, and Tesla are two of the major players in this space. And again, I believe we, as a government, we should, we should welcome technology and at the same time be agnostic between companies. And again, I think the the standard should be that everyone who's high tech and is willing to make a good deal for the city of Milpitas should be welcomed and considered. If any of the council members would like to try riding in a Cybertruck, I can help arrange that. I personally enjoy driving it. And of course, if you haven't taken a test drive in a Rivian, I think everyone should be given fair consideration as you make your choice. I understand Elon Musk is, has been associated with some political controversies. But at the end of the day, what concerns me is what's good for the city of Milpitas in terms of our technology and network. I've personally charged at the Tesla Supercharger Network. It's been a pretty good experience in Milpitas. Again, I say the more the merrier. If we want to have more electric vehicle stuff and more autonomy, great. But let's, let's keep all our options open. And again, I think this, there's a lot of potential here, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Tsai. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make any comments? We have Mr. Montemeyer.
Thank you. Eventually, he will be considered. I'm a man from heaven. Thirty five to the seven digits, 35 million. Hopefully, he will come. Now, I'll start with the history. The Ford was, is now at the great mall. I work for Numi. Now I know the, I know how we do it there. I loaded vehicles in the train. I do some installations, accessories installation. And so I'm really impressed. I, should I encourage you now or to approve it? I, this is really incredible. I mean, this is great. I wish I'm still, I still could work. I worked for Toyota, in other words, and I did those. I'm familiar with vehicles. So now, even though I'm a geologist with, I like fossil fuels, but we're really trying to solve that problem of the, of the smoke. So, yeah. This, this one should be encouraging. And I don't know if to express more. I'm, I'm really impressed on the presentation. Like, even though I, there may be, I don't know, I can even see negative, even though I am, I have a Tacoma. But I'm not trying to encourage now a long bed. I see a short bed there, but still as good as a long bed truck. So very nice, very nice presentation. I, I hope that we will go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments?
I have no additional public speaker cards, mayor.
Okay, seeing that, you can come back up and have some questions from our council members. We have a council member, Chua, that wanted to ask a question.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome. Welcome to all of you to Milpitas. And thank you for coming this evening. And thank you for considering investing and working with us in our city. My question is, there are good statistics on the projection, the forecast for the first year, the third year and fourth year to eighth year. And my question is, have you, have you done any tax sharing agreements with other cities?
Yes, we currently have two agreements in place. One that needs to be executed, but has been approved by the city council in Laguna Beach. Our operations there have not started. And then we have a sales tax sharing agreement executed with Eastvale in Southern California. We were recently invited to the Chamber of Commerce's annual reception because we were in the top 25 most, highest sales tax generator in the city, which was a very exciting moment for us.
And so Eastvale, how long has it been?
A little over a year.
So how is your original projection versus the actual? How, how did it go?
Um, I, Lucas, you may know actual numbers. I know that we are exceeding our original projections. And according to state statute, the city must conduct an assessment of what was originally agreed to and what the actual numbers end up being. So we'll see where we land in five years, but we are exceeding those, that first year's projections.
That's good to hear.
Yes.
Because that was my concern, whether, you know, forecast is soft dollar.
Of course.
Always look at that. Yeah. Expenditure is hard dollars. So, so my question is, what do you think of the impact of tariff to your organization? And I know there, you know, we have the Chinese electric cars coming in, D Y D and N I O, Neo. So how do you feel about that?
Yeah, we are, I would say broadly not concerned about companies outside the United States, specifically China coming in. I think there is concern about the level of data sharing that these companies would require from the vehicles. And I'm not sure that the United States would allow such transparency and and sharing of customers' data. I also think that the tariffs exist to create a bit of a barrier that is insurmountable for other Chinese companies to come in. Currently, we are just looking at how our customers are responding to our vehicles. And the response has been just surpassed all expectations. We have over 100,000 preorders for our R2, and that is growing. And we think that there's room in the market for for many, many more models.
That sounds good. This sounds very good. On the, the, I know we get tax on delivery, right? The location, which is going to be Milpitas.
Yes.
How do we ensure that, that we increase the the delivery here? Because I know you have other several locations. I'm trying to increase the tax revenue.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Well, the more, the more vehicles that Rivian can sell in Northern California, the more sales tax that Milpitas will realize. We actually just opened up a showroom in San Francisco on Fell Street in Hayes Valley. That location gets a lot of foot traffic, not just from people who live in the city, but visitors. So orders placed in that showroom in San Francisco, many of those will take delivery here in Milpitas. So the more service centers and the more showrooms we're able to build, the more demand that we can generate. Also, a lot of our customers purchase their vehicles online and don't actually interact with anyone in person.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? We have a council member, Lam.
Have several questions. One, the facility in Milpitas, do you plan to have a showroom in that facility?
We do. There will be a front of house component to the facility. It's about, I'd say, four to 5,000 square feet of front of house area, which may include a vehicle or two on display. Right now, that would be the R1T and the R1S. In future state, that could be the R2 or R3 models. And then there would be ancillary office components to that for our Rivian employees.
Okay. You guys mentioned charging station network earlier. What's your plan for the Bay Area? What's your plan for the Bay Area for the charging stations? And are the charging stations a universal truck or a just Rivian only?
Yeah, so we have a designated group internally at Rivian that's solely focused on the establishment and development of our Rivian Adventure Network. That network is something that we're trying to build out, not only to connect our users of Rivians and owners of Rivians, but also folks that own other EVs to, you know, longer distance road trips that they might want to take. So connectivity on that network is super important for us. So that's something that we're rapidly developing. That's not planned as a function of this particular site, day one, but it certainly could be in the future if it fit within that program.
How many charging stations are you planning to build?
So for the purposes of the service center here and the delivery side of our business, I think we're looking at thirteen or fourteen, what we call our L2 chargers, that would be on the interior of the premises. And then we would have a host of L3 chargers, which are the faster, they're commonly referred to as DCFC fast chargers on the exterior. Those would be for the purpose of Rivian to be able to deliver those vehicles that consumers are picking up at a full state of charge. So there would probably be three to six of the L3 chargers, in addition to maybe ten or twelve L2 chargers on the outside.
How about throughout Milpitas?
Throughout Milpitas, I can't answer that exactly. As far as the Rivian Adventure Network side of the business goes.
Okay.
So we, we don't currently have any plans in establishing a fast charger here in Milpitas. That obviously can be reconsidered. Right now Rivian focuses on electrifying important highway corridors, especially those that connect adventure destinations. So for example, we have chargers in and outside of Yosemite. We have chargers outside of Joshua Tree. And then we have thirty-three fast charging sites along the highway. But we can consider one, putting one near Milpitas.
Okay. And are those Rivian only charger or can they, can other vehicles use those chargers?
Yep, other vehicles can, can use those chargers with an adapter. There's kind of two chart, two connectors right now. You have the North America Charging Standard or J thirty-four, four, J, I forgot what the, the number is. That was, that is the connector that Tesla used originally. And now most of the automakers, if not all, are transitioning to that connector. The other connector is the CCS connector. So in short, if you pull up to a Rivian charging station over the next year and you do not drive a Rivian, you'll be able to charge there.
Okay. If certain vehicles, Rivian vehicles has battery issues. And they go to Milpitas facility to swap the batteries, how do you dispose the old battery?
That's a great question. So we have protocols put in place per our service center plans to make sure that one, we have technicians that are on site that are certified to deal with those types of battery replacements. So in the event that a vehicle came into the service center requiring a battery replacement, the replacement battery itself would come on a just-in-time basis. So it would not be dwelling on site for an extended period of time. That would be a hazard or a risk to the facility or site itself. That appointment would be scheduled such that the replacement battery would be taken out of the vehicle. It would be put back into the dunnage crate that the new battery came in and it would be shipped out the same day.
Ship out to outside?
To a parts distribution center that manages the disposal process of that battery. So it would be shipped on a, on a truck out of the Milpitas facility.
Okay. When, when there are issues with the battery, let's say it caught fires, does the facility has measures to prioritize?
Yeah, we have, we have protocols in place in the event there was a fire on a standalone battery pack or a vehicle itself to try and consolidate that fire, to mitigate potential damage beyond. So there are protocols in place in the event that that would happen.
Okay. That's all I have.
If I could add one thing, we actually trained fire departments. We trained the Laguna Fire Department on how to handle fires related to batteries, because there is a different protocol. So that is, again, we have a relationship with Laguna. We were able to set that up. There are halo effects in partnerships with Rivian, like training fire departments on this work.
Thank you. Actually, I was thinking of that.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Is there anyone else? We have Councilmember Chua. And that's great to hear about training for their fire departments. Oh, okay. So for me and my comments. So you say you have a showroom in San Francisco, but a showroom is not a dealer, like, you know, it's, it's just to show the car.
It is, we are licensed as a dealer in showrooms so that we can conduct sales activities. Sales activities, according to the state, is taking customers on demo drives, actually transacting the sale on site, discussing pricing, leasing options. So we are licensed as a dealer. However, we are, we operate very differently than a traditional franchise dealership in a few different ways. One, we are direct to consumer. So we manufacture, we, we design, we develop, we manufacture, we sell and we service the vehicle. Again, we are fully vertically integrated. So unlike a dealership, you are speaking to a franchise of the manufacturer. We are one in the same. So if you're to walk in the Rivian showroom in San Francisco, the experience is a little bit different. One, the price is the price. There is no negotiating. I will pay the same for a R1T as, as Lucas. The second is we don't keep any inventory on site. You made to, or you, you know, you design your vehicle color, trims, et cetera. And then the, that customer would, would pick it up in Milpitas. And there are a few other differences.
So you order the, so how long does it take if I order one? How long will it take?
It, it depends on your configuration. The shortest amount is like twenty-four hours. The, it could take longer than that if you are ordering something that we currently don't have been worried of or are, have a backfill or a backorder for.
I really do like, I do like your style, the, the models, that they're really, you know, modern. And I like the, I just like the way that they look. And I think a lot of, and I really do appreciate that they, the quality rating is, when you showed us that our point of the ratings, that it's quality, that's, that's really important to a lot of folks. And I've been noticing a lot of Rivians around town. So I think you're going to do really well, you know. I think it's people, and according to your statistics, people are happy with them. So I think it's, it's, I'm thrilled that you're, you know, that you're going to be here. I really, I really do like your cars, your automobiles rather.
Thank you.
So and then I'm glad also that Amazon is using your Rivians as well. So, thank you. Anyone else have any more comments? We have Councilmember Chua.
Piggybacking on the question of, oops. Piggybacking on the question of how long, I would like to call on Director Lee. Director Lee. How long did it take you to get your Rivian?
Good evening, Councilmember Chua and members of the council. It took me a bit longer because I pre-ordered it pretty early on. So it took maybe years, but I, I pre-ordered it pretty early.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
That's it.
Was it customized? Is that why?
He's a happy, he's a happy customer. Thank you. Do you like your car?
Yes, I love it and it's perfect for our family.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I, I see you drive around with your Rivian.
Nothing about permitting or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? We have Councilmember Liam.
There you go. Thank you. Would you share how fast, if we're charging it from our home, you know, in the garage? How fast does the vehicle charge?
This is a very political answer, but it's true. It really just depends. Depends on what your charger is rated at. So we have these fast chargers. Those are a hundred and fifty kilowatt to three hundred and fifty kilowatt. It also depends on kind of the capacity of your battery. I would give you an average, if you're charging at a fast charger, it will be anywhere between forty-five minutes to about an hour and a half for what will be considered a full tank. When you're charging at home, you're typically using a level-two charger, which is usually rated at around eleven kilowatts. That is going to be really mirror the behavior of your phone. You pull in, you plug it in, you go to bed, you wake up and your phone and your car is charged. That's going to take closer to six to nine hours, depending again, kind of how, what the electricity is dispensing at and what your, your charger is rated for.
Thank you. I am thrilled that you choose Milpitas as your, what do you call, last mile?
Last mile hub.
Right. And I, I'm sure we are really looking forward to a long-lasting, prosperous relationship. So thank you again for coming to Milpitas.
Thank you. And be sure to, just a friendly reminder to turn off your mic when you're not going to be using it. So I think yours is flashing. Oh, okay. We have, okay, it was, it was Councilmember Chua. Okay. All right. We have Councilmember Lam.
Yes, I remember I asked you about battery before. You, you were saying Rivian battery is able to remove, is removable battery. Do you guys have plan of having stations of swapping batteries?
We don't currently have any plans of swapping batteries.
I'll say it's, it's removable under a service activity, so a consumer couldn't, you know, you couldn't take it out in your garage and plug in a different battery as it, as it's currently designed.
No, I was thinking night and I all model is building swapping stations.
Right.
People go in and swap the battery and, yeah, it's in ten, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, not, not in current state, but maybe in a future state.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Okay, has anyone finished with their, we have, we have Vice Mayor?
The question is for staff, please, any representative, maybe finance. I like numbers.
Alex, you can maybe both come up.
So for the, thank you. For the benefit of the community, I want to ask some question that clearly defines our hope to be future relationship with Rivian as to the economic development subsidy that we're considering for them tonight. So that subsidy, correct me if I'm wrong, is twofold. One is we share the sales tax that, that they generate. Number two, we have to help them with about three to three point five million in enhancing their facility.
Good evening, Council, Council Mayor Montano, Vice Mayor Barbadillo, Councilmembers Chua, Liam and Lam, Louis Kefresi Howe, Director of Finance, and thank you for the question. It's a two-part question. They do, will be generating sales tax, yes. There will be a share. However, the city is not advancing any money at all. We will only receive money as a state, a agency that provides, that collects the sales tax for us and distributes that to us. So at no point in time will the city of Milpitas be in the negative.
Can I also clarify and add to the finance director?
Yes.
The initial letter of intent offer included a request of up to three hundred thousand dollars for equipment and tenant improvements. The actual agreement that we're, that we have negotiated does not include any of that funding. Yeah. So the slide that you saw earlier, it was just to provide background as to where we started.
Oh, to where we started. So the agreement does not include any subsidy as to the the location of the business, like enhanced.
Equipment or tenant improvements, correct. It does not.
All right. So I'm also looking at a part of it. And I'm sure Rivian will be very successful. But there is a, a part of the report, I think it will be part of the agreement about if, in the event that Rivian is not meeting the covenants required by the contract. What are those covenants that?
I'm going to defer to Acting City Attorney Christopher Creach to take you through those covenants in detail.
Okay.
So simply speaking, there is a requirement for Rivian to designate the city correctly as the point of sale. They are applying for a direct licensing requirement. So there is covenants related to that, as well as covenants related to, basically if the activity is designable as the city for the point of sale, for the imposition of those taxes that they will so designate it. There is covenants that relate to not accepting unlawful, unlawful other incentives and other activities that are prohibited by law. In these kinds of situations, there are also covenants that relate to providing needed documentation and information, including reporting. As mentioned during the presentation, there is a five-year report that's required by state law. So there's a requirement to comply with documentation and information related to those activities, as well as reporting on taxable activities. Apologize, I'm trying to do this, trying to do this from memory.
Okay. So there are conditions, both requirements of some rule and law and then some negotiated by our city with Rivian.
Yes.
And these are the covenants that Rivian needs to comply with. And that's the reason why there is a provision there of a termination.
Yes, sir. There is.
Okay. So just to be clear, what's the tax rate for, I mean, sales tax, nine point twenty-five? Already? Okay. So it's part of the nine point three seventy-five percent that we're splitting with Rivian as the form of subsidy?
Yes, the estimates that you see in your document that you presented today are based on the one percent Bradley Burns tax.
Okay.
We may see a slight, slight, and I mean very slight, some revenue from Measure F, but we are predicating our estimates. They're based on the one percent.
Okay. So just to be clear, you know, it's not the nine point three seventy-five percent we're sharing, but a percent of that?
We're, we're sharing the one, the one, the majority shares, the one percent.
Have we tried as just thinking out of the box, remember then out of the sales tax in California, you know, California as the state gets a big chunk, the county have a big chunk. The city has a, a small portion and we're limited to one percent. Have we tried talking to the county, hey, your share with the sales tax that we generate with Rivian? We're hosting them, you know, they're coming, did we at least try to say, can you contribute to this subsidy?
I think that would be a challenging conversation. But I, I think that would be a very challenging conversation to have. Let me be blunt.
I'd like to see, I'd love to see sources. So just, just thinking, you know, we're going to share Rivian's sales tax proceeds with them and maybe the county will, because the county will generate with that too. Maybe a letter from Economic Development Director would, would probably at least.
If I may, Vice Mayor Barberio, we actually do have an agreement with Santa Clara County for the two dealerships that are located off of Highway eight eighty that sits on county land. So we do have a tax sharing agreement with the county for those two dealerships on those sites.
Right.
In place.
Those two dealerships, we share, we tax share with the county. What I'm saying is we're tax sharing with Rivian, right? What I'm saying is, we're tax sharing with Rivian, right, the one percent of the whole uh tax, and I'm sure county will have what, one percent of the nine point three seventy-five? And they will be generating from uh the business that Rivian will, you know, will bring to Mopitas because they're part of the county. What I'm just saying is, can they probably share, uh, you know?
Again, I think that would be a challenging conversation to have. Um, and not one, uh, I, that's all I really could say about that. I can't
Okay.
see anybody giving up sales tax in this environment at this point or any sort of revenues. Sales tax is a significant revenues for municipalities.
Okay, I was just, um, I was just motivated by uh some president, you know.
We appreciate the question.
And then, you know, it it it, you know, it it caters for a conversation and he gets his way. Maybe, you know, that that's the the model. But yeah, maybe, what I, why I'm trying to ask that is, you know, as much as we want to help Rivian, you know, they also uh benefit us, and if there's any source uh that would uh help us, help Rivian and Rivian help us, like the county or some other states, because Rivian has been uh asking for, you know, I'm I'm reading the report, you know, some subsidies from the feds regarding uh EVs and something like that. If, since this is a trend and and since this is a, you know, an inevitable uh industry that comes, they're growing, you know, maybe a, you know, some talks with not only the city where they're coming from, but county or state or something like that would uh further, you know, help revenue generating. That's just a thought, as I said, you know, they come in, they give us what, nineteen million in eight years? They are giving, the county will probably about double that, and and why not? Why not have that conversation?
Not sales tax, this, that sales tax comes to us. There there is a, the the one percent sales tax belongs to us.
Right.
Because the the facility is located in the city of Mopitas.
Understand, but I'm I'm grander than that, right? Nine point three seventy-five tax, uh, sales tax in California, a percent of that comes uh to the city. A certain percentage to that comes to uh to the county, a certain percentage, majority of it comes to the state. What I'm saying is, you know, the nine point three seventy-five uh tax, sales tax, any business would generate uh will trickle down benefits to the city, to the county, to the state, so we are sharing.
We we agree with, yeah, let me, let me get a little bit more specific. Those sales tax uh rules, for lack of a better term, are passed by the voters. So the voters designate those sales taxes, and many of them are very, very old for those particular purposes. So, though there, there is a lot of itty-bitties in the in the county sales tax, and they're all directed for particular purposes. So similar to our Measure F, that's our money. So we wouldn't share that with anybody else, nor would we share our one percent in this particular deal. And so I I think um, or any one percent that comes to Mopitas for 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 that matter. So the remaining portion of that nine point three seven five percent is passed by some sort of law, and some of it is very old and been in place for a long time, and it's designated for a particular purpose. Um, so any sort of change to that share would be challenging. We are currently capped at our nine point three seven five percent, we as a city. Um, it just would be very challenging. We'd have to, you know, we would have to take it back to some legislative authority in the county, they'd have to ask for that. And I think it would be um, it would mean a restructuring of our our tax base, and I don't see that happening, given how how much people are getting from.
It's a thinking out of the box, I'm not talking about uh restructuring uh the tax system, like us, right? We have the one percent uh share of the sales tax generated by the city, and we can subsidy share that.
So, so, let me, if I could offer this, on April first, we're having our sales tax people come. Our folks that do a lot of help for us, and they do the consulting, they do the forecasting, and they're highly expert in this. I will pose this question to them, and they'll be prepared to answer, because I think that that would be much better than than my dancing, to be honest with you, because in reality, this would be a challenge that I can't see overcoming, because it's, it is a legislate, all those taxes are legislative actions.
I think what we can do also under that training is talk about the county pool, the sharing of the county pool dollar.
Yeah, we do share in the county pool dollars.
Okay, I'll I'll, we'll we'll have another conversation with that, but it's not, what you're talking about is not what I'm asking, but I I I'll rest it now.
If if I may, I may offer, uh, I'll I'll speak with you uh as appropriate and get more detail on that question, and we'll make sure that they're prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Vice Mayor, if I just kind of just add on a little bit is, definitely hear what you're saying, though, is as our city and our team partner with entities such as Rivian or others to drive economic development in Mopitas, other county and other folks that get a share of the nine point three seven five sales tax, they benefit from that.
Sure.
And so if we can, you know, if there are opportunities to um partner on those benefits in the future for future deals, um, um, that's, I understand, that's what you're asking, and we're definitely here you, and we can talk more um in the future, and we can talk to our counterparts in the county, and those would be difficult conversations, as our Finance Director said, but, you know, we we hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it it is, that's uh what I meant. So we generate thirty-five million here, we share it with Rivian, for sure, on a one percent of total sales tax, for sure, uh, other uh entities like the county will also benefit from what they generate. So that's the question, might got it, right? Uh, you know, maybe, yeah, it's unconventional, but maybe it's start of conversation, because it makes sense. They give us thirty-five a million, uh, we give them a a a portion of it as a subsidy and a higher entity than us that also benefits for the business and and uh uh revenue that they generate takes it somewhere else. Some talk like that, that that's what I meant, it's not.
Yeah, I I I did understand what you were meaning, I'm, I was just thinking about the conversation I'd be having with county staff, that's all.
Okay.
So, but we but we will, we will vet that question with ourselves, also, they'll be here April first. Thank you, co, thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, uh, I think you guys all know how I feel about the county. So, I think it would open up a whole can of worms there. Um, well, all we have to do is just look at what they've done to our, things that they've done in our city, and I just, I won't go there, but um. Anyway. Yeah. Yeah. Anyhow, uh, yeah, thank you, so I, we're ready for the motion, it's, we have um Councilmember Chuah here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, motion to conduct a public hearing as required by Government Code Section five threes, five three zero eight three for the proposed economic development subsidy report. Number two, adopt a resolution approving an economic development incentive agreement by and between the city of Mopitas and Rivian LLC for the operation of an industrial facility located at seven five five Yosemite Drive and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have uh Councilmember Chuah who has made the motion to accept uh as written, and we have a second by Vice Mayor Barbadiyo, so now we will call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadiyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chuah?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Liang?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Congratulations, we're thrilled, we're thrilled, we really are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now um moving on to the next item on ci- city, Matt Kano?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Deputy Fire Chief and Fire Marshal Arthur Belton, who's gonna present on the twenty twenty-five weed abatement public hearing and resolution to adopt, uh, resolution adopting, adoption to abate the weeds in Mopitas. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Belton.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, Arthur Belton, as was stated, Deputy Chief with the Fire Department and functioning as your Fire Marshal here in the city of Mopitas. Tonight here to present on the weed abatement program, next slide, please. As recent events would indicate, uh, obviously we have significant fire issues here in the state. It usually rotates around a normal fire season, but we had a significant event in the mid-December, so it's starting to tell us that this is a year-round kind of cycle that we're starting to deal with. In these large-scale fires and events, they are often three things that we look at when we do um our firefighting activities and prevention activities, this is weather, topography, and fuels. Next slide, please. As we cannot affect the weather, and we can't really change the topography significantly, we focus on the fuel load and try and deal with those. We focus on fuels, defensible space around structures, and reducing those fuel loads, especially around easily ignitable fuels, what we call light flashy fuels. These have a rapid spread of growth that can exceed speeds that we can actually contend with and battling these fires, and they have potential for ember spreads going even miles ahead of where the fire is. Next slide, please. So for our weed abatement program, to try and help mitigate these issues, uh, last month, you're, you passed a resolution declaring weeds and identified them to be a public nuisance, and you set the hearing for this evening on March fourth. Resolution was sent to the Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program. Also, that notice was sent out through the city clerk's office and published in the local newspaper, as well as mailed out to individual property owners from my office. Next slide, please. Weed abatement program comes annually to this council three times a year. The the first time happens on consent, it happened last month, um, declaration of the weeds being a nuisance. Tonight is the first public hearing. This is the the second time, third time will be in June, when we have another public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to provide parcel owners an opportunity to contest being on the list prior to us doing and conducting inspections on the listed properties that were in your packet and doing any mitigation measures to abate afterwards. Next slide, please. City Mopitas is the authority that has jurisdiction, there are three exceptions that are notable, as you may, driving around town, notice and wonder why we're not attending to those specifically. The California Department of Transportation deals with off-ramps on certain highways and freeways. Santa Clara Valley Water District deals with all waterways and associated waterways. And County Roads and Airports deals specifically with the Montague Expressway, the median strip along that. Next slide, please. The process for this, after this hearing tonight, the county will begin their compliance inspection process for the listed parcels that were in your packet on April first. After the inspections are conducted, owners are notified and given two weeks to abate the hazard. If the property owner abates the hazard, the only cost that will be incurred is the inspection fee. If the hazards are not addressed, the county will then have a contractor come and conduct the abatement. To give an example, the figures for last year, seventy parcels were inspected. Forty-seven of those parcels passed the inspection, the only assessment on those were the ninety-six dollar inspection fee. Twenty-three failed the inspection, fourteen were not abated by the county. Um, most of those were handled prior to the contractor going out to doing the abatement. Nine were abated by the county and then charged. Next slide, please. So the recommendation from staff, open the public hearing and close the following public, have closed the hearing following public comment, adopt a resolution directing the sound, County of Santa Clara Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency, the Weed Abatement Program, to abate the nuisance, keep an account of the cost, and embody such an account in a report and assessment list to the city council in accordance with the Mopitas Municipal Code. I'm here to answer any questions. Also with the Weed Abatement Program tonight, here is Garrick Yostalevsky.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. Any, any uh questions from the public? We have Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you, Voltaire Montemayor, Mopitas. I'm always with the regulations, um, this is favoring the city, um, the enforcement and the people, I believe we all consider whatever the problem out there, um, anything, I've seen, I've seen a picture of a fire, so yeah, any of this abatement also will cause uh any, uh, maybe a fire, flood, so not to remember all what is listed there, what I saw, um, I'm in favor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, anyone else have any comments on this item?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close it, and now we'll have a council discussion. Anyone from the council want to make any comments, or if not, just a motion?
Mayor, it might be helpful to call specifically to see if there are any, if anyone is here to object to any of the properties on the report.
Is there anyone here in the public that would like to object to any of the items on the, that was um discussed? I don't see any, so we'll go back to the council. Okay, so we have a Vice Mayor?
All right, uh, I move to adopt a resolution directing the County of Santa Clara Consumer and Environmental Protection Agency Weed Abatement Program to abate the nuisance, keep on account of the cost, and embody such account in a report and assessment list to the city council in accordance with the Mopitas Municipal Cod- Code.
Okay, is there a second? We have a Councilmember Liang. Okay, it has been motioned by Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Liang, so let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadiyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chuah?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Liang?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye, thank you, everyone, and now moving on, city, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for item twelve on the agenda, I'd like to call Planning Director Jay Lee. The item is to receive an overview of the public review draft of the full updated zoning ordinance and to provide comments to staff as we move forward in the process.
Good e- good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, we're excited to be here, because we've reached a a pretty significant milestone in this important project. Uh, actually backing up a little bit, we, uh, the council already adopted phase one of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. Uh, this is now phase two, which is an overhaul of the whole zoning ordinance. It's a major project, uh, and the public review draft is now available. So, we had a study session in the past, but now we are ready to have a study session that is based off of a public draft. Um, so, we have uh our project manager, Holly Pearson, uh, to deliver the presentation, uh, in partnership with Lisa Wise Consulting, who is the consultant um for this project, so they uh uh, Jen Murillo, they are both here, uh, or they are both present virtually to deliver the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, uh, good evening, Mayor Montano and members of the council. Um, again, uh, we're very excited about this milestone, having the public review draft with the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. Uh, it it's a a a hefty amount of information, four hundred and fifty pages of zoning code. Um, so we've tried to distill our presentation tonight down to the the significant changes and what we feel are the benefits that the zoning update will provide to um to residents and to developers and various um people who are interested in our city, so with that, I'm gonna hand the time over to Jen Murillo from Lisa Wise Consulting, thanks.
Thank you, Holly, thank you, Director Lee, Mayor, council members, it's great to be here tonight. Um, as the Director Lee mentioned, this is a a large milestone for us, and we're pleased to be here. My presentation is going to cover just a um high-level review of the project and hit on the key um, key content changes for the public review draft. We're also gonna speak about input we've heard so far during this public review period, and then close with next steps. So the key objectives for this project is that we are aiming to modernize your zoning ordinance, we want to make it more user-friendly. We are also ensuring consistency across all applicable city documents, and that includes your general plan. Um, we are promoting compact, mixed-use, transit-oriented development types where appropriate, while protecting existing single-family neighborhoods. Next slide. Next slide. This is a two-and-a-half-year project, and we started this project in 2023. Um, we had our initial phase, as Director Lee mentioned, that was adopted last year. We have new zoning districts that were, um, completed in that first phase. They are effective today. So focused on the second phase of this project, the comprehensive update, and we are at nearing the end with the expectation that this comprehensive update will be complete and adopted in the summer. Next slide. We have been before council a couple of times during this project already. Um, we did come to you in 2023 to discuss the new zoning districts when they were, um, presented initially for phase one. We also presented at that meeting a background review and recommendations report for the comprehensive update where we laid out our, uh, initial analysis and anticipated recommendations for revisions and improvements to the code. Last year, we met with the council to talk about some key policy topics that are now reflected in the draft. We talked about parking, incentives, and some other topics that we wanted to get early input on. So now tonight, we are talking about the public review draft, um, that has been available for, um, feedback for a couple of months. Next slide. So over this two-year project thus far, we've provided a variety of formats and opportunities for the community to, um, be involved and provide input. We've conducted interviews with stakeholders. We established a zoning advisory group that met five times. We've had community workshops, provided an online survey, and, uh, staff has also been uh, able to provide some dedicated one-on-one virtual office hours time, um, specifically for this project. Next slide. Um, so based on the feedback we've heard over the past couple of years, we now have the full draft of the comprehensive zoning ordinance available. We published it in December. Um, and we are leaving public review open through this Friday, um, through March 7th. And we will take all the public comment and feedback that we've heard, consider those, make revisions to this draft, and then bring a revised draft ordinance before the Planning Commission and back to city council for consideration for adoption. Whenever we embark on a project like this, a comprehensive, uh, zoning ordinance update, we are very focused on ensuring that we can make it as user-friendly as possible and look at opportunities to structure it as intuitively as possible. Here, we were provided the opportunity where we were able to look at shifting out where the current zoning standards are included in the code today. And we are proposing to move it out into its own title, a new Title 13 that is solely focused and dedicated to the zoning ordinance. That provides us the opportunity to improve the numbering and structure with a new numbering system that allows for the zoning ordinance to be amended over time in a manner that is clean and retains content um, in the same, uh, location and still maintain kind of an easy-to-use pattern. Next slide. We're also focused on making sure, in addition to that overall logical organization and structure, that the code is updated, modernized in terms of allowed land uses and definitions. Any outdated language has been replaced. We are looking across the board at clarifications and simplifying the code. That's both in regard to standards and procedures. We've included tables and graphics so that standards are easy to understand and illustrated. And then, of course, making edits for legal compliance. All of these standards are really important, or improvements are really important to make it easier for both the public to use and understand, as well as for city staff to administer. Next slide. Now, in the first phase of this project last ye- year, we had an updated zoning map adopted. As we were going through the second phase of the update, we did still see some opportunities for some small updates to be made to the zoning map. And that really included eliminating, uh, multiple overlays that we also saw as being outdated or just not used, or also that we could incorporate more effectively into the zoning ordinance in other ways. One example of that is that we replaced a mobile home park overlay with simply a base zone for mobile home parks. With this, we don't have any changes proposed to those new zones that were adopted last year. We don't have any changes proposed to the hillside, uh, combining district zone. Uh, we also don't have any changes to the, the town center zone. That is a zone that is being analyzed through the housing opportunities districts or HODs. That project is a separate project from this comprehensive zoning ordinance update, so we are, um, keeping those changes being addressed through, through that separate project, um, and not in this project. Next slide. Um, another key change that we've incorporated, um, to highlight to you is the update and consolidation of allowed land uses. Um, the goal here is to provide flexibility in how loose uses are allowed so that the code can really withstand the test of time for uses that will come into play in five, eight, 10 years. What we've done is consolidated redundant and really detailed precise uses under a more uniform and general term. And so this, this approach really reflects the fact that the nature of land use does change over time. A couple examples here relate to community assembly and retail, and this is allows the planning staff to have more discretion that allows for businesses to be able to to open and find locations more easily. It helps to accommodate business turnover, changes in businesses in existing tenant spaces, and also some flexibility with temporary uses. Next slide. We also worked really hard with city staff to find places where we could reduce permitting levels, um, for certain uses and projects. So in cases where certain uses require planning commission approval now, finding opportunities to um, allow some of those projects to be approved at a staff level. So this applies to, of course, it varies across uses and zones, but opportunities through, um, use permits, site development permits, and also creating a new approval, a minor deviation, that allows for small deviations from standards in the code, um, when it's appropriate and have a staff level approval for that. So looking at opportunities to streamline, reduce the amount of time to get to, uh, a project approval. Next slide. Parking is an, is an important topic. Um, we have talked about this, I think, at every meeting on this project. Um, and the approach with the parking revisions is generally moderate reductions being proposed. So we want to be respectful of Milpitas's context while still implementing the policy uh, vision and direction, um, through the general plan and climate action plan. Now, in some cases, parking ratios are not proposed to be changed, but generally speaking, we are looking at moderate reductions. Now, that doesn't mean a developer can't provide more parking if they so choose, um, and many often do depending on their desired tenants or buyers, so that flexibility remains in place. Um, and there are only maximum parking limits, uh, really located near major transit stops and in the metro-specific plan. So this is also one of the places where, in some cases, parking can be a challenge or a hurdle for a new business to move into a a location or find a new property. Um, here, this, this will help to allow this to be less of a um, potential hurdle for a new business and project to come in, projects to come into the city. Next slide. So while we are looking at reducing the minimum requirements for vehicle parking, we're looking at alternative modes of transportation and parking strategies. We are expanding, um, the bicycle parking standards to be more comprehensive, and similarly, expanding on what the city allows now for alternative parking strategies. So to encourage strategies such as car share and additional electric vehicle charging spaces, provide opportunities for those being provided on a project to reduce the amount of vehicle parking spaces. We've also included transportation demand management, or TDM. This is a, a new requirement for projects, for larger projects that are of a certain size where they would include a, a TDM plan for their project that would identify specific strategies that would reduce the number of vehicle trips generated by their project. So while this is, um, a new mandatory requirement, the, the code includes a menu of options of those strategies that a develop, developer could choose from that suits their project best. So, um, they can have the flexibility in finding what's most appropriate for their project. Next slide. And then lastly, um, design standards for single-family residential ha- have been included. These are proposed to apply only to newly constructed, single-family homes. Um, standards include those that would limit the amount of blank space on exterior walls that entrances be oriented to be visi- visible from the street where that's practical, having weather-protected entrances, some privacy requirements, um, partic- for second stories that are close to property lines, and then, um, requiring a higher level of design on those building facades that are facing the street. So in this case, this is providing objective, clear standards for single-family homes, so to ideally reduce some of that back and forth that may exist today between an applicant and city staff during review. So hopefully to streamline, uh, the review and approval of new single-family homes. Next slide. So we have had some feedback on the draft. We had two meetings in January, a community workshop and a zoning advisory group meeting. And some of the feedback we heard were, um, support for the business supportive regulations. Uh, we heard the desire to preserve that hillside combining district, um, not make changes there. Streamlining review and permitting was supported, as well as ensuring neighboring use compatibility. Um, from our zoning advisory group, we heard the importance of focusing on the benefits to the community of this up, update during our meet, outreach meetings. Um, making sure the ordinance encourages that alternative, those alternative forms of transportation to support reduced parking requirements and to update supplemental materials along with this update. So ensure that that ADU guidebook and the fee schedule are updated to reflect, um, this update as well. Next slide. And we met with the Planning Commission last month. The Planning Commission did support lowering the, the required level of permitting for some uses. They were on board with that. Uh, they did acknowledge the, that parking is a key concern for the community. We want reductions in required parking to be reasonable. And then also some good feedback about the single-family residential requirements. Uh, questioning whether it would be appropriate to require a covered parking space in the instances for those smaller, single-family homes that would only require one parking space. And then, um, questioning the appropriateness of the dimensions for the protected, weather-protected entry or porch dimensions. So those are, those are items we expect to follow up on in the revisions when we bring the ordinance back for hearing. So tonight, we want to hear from you, um, if you have any feedback about what you think works well in this draft. If there's anything that seems to be unclear or needs improvement. And then if there are any particular topics that you think we should emphasize as we move forward to the hearings. And next slide, I think that will be it. We are just, um, again, looking forward for wrapping up. Um, we expect adoption hearings in the summer. Um, this, the planning department staff still has virtual office hours available for, through Friday, so Friday is the close of the public review period. If you have any, um, comments, questions, um, Holly Pearson's contact information is here. Um, please reach out. Um, we would love to hear from you if you don't get a chance to bring it up tonight. And with that, just want to thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you for that presentation, uh, Holly and staff. And so now I'll call for the public hearing, public comment, I mean. Anybody would like to come and say any comments on this item? We have Mr. Montemayor. Welcome.
Very quickly, great presentation. I'm, I think I was, I was here also during those, uh, previous meetings or presentations, and I couldn't comment, but I appreciate very much, um. Uh, the commi- that group making the, the updating or this zoning ordinance. That, you're doing great. Um, yeah, uh, people want to live in Milpitas. Everybody want to live here. I there's, i- you compare the population and the area and the topography, all of those, yeah, you're doing great. Uh, the city is watching. We are all teaming up. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Montemayor, and you are right. A lot of people want to move here, but they can't afford it anymore, so. Uh, yeah, Milpitas is a special place. It's really an ideal place for peop- to raise a family and for people to live here. Um, so anyone else from the public?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, well then we'll close this, um, comments from the public, and then we'll go on to our city council members. Uh, if you have any comments? Anyone? Okay, I have a couple. And one of them is, I'm just curious. I'm just curious why the Hawes, the Housing Ordinance Zones are not included in this because you know, if you're going to zone a certain area and you're not going to be, and you want to put housing there, wouldn't that also affect the zoning?
That's a great question, Mayor. Uh, we received a grant for the housing opportunity districts prior to this project starting. So we were able to get a head start on it. Um, and it's, yeah, the, the grant is really why it, it started as a separate project compared to this overhaul of all the zoning districts.
Yeah, I was just curious why it wasn't overlapping. And speaking about overlapping, what, what do you, I still not, I'm still not clear about, uh, overlay zones. What, uh, how, can you describe to me what an overlay zone is?
Yes, and our consultants and Holly can add, but I'll take a stab at it first. Uh, we have a base zoning. That's your underlying zoning. Uh, I though, these are pretty well-known. It's like residential, that's a major category, commercial, industrial, uh, civic or institutional, open space. These are your main categories. Sometimes cities establish and implement overlay zoning districts over these base zoning districts with a specific purpose in mind. So it depends on, maybe it's a special area where you, you want to prioritize, um, something for that neighborhood, then you establish an overlay zoning district. Uh, some examples of overlay zoning districts could be hillside, like a hillside overlay zone, uh, maybe an entertainment, entertainment zone, a mobile home overlay zone. Yes.
Okay, I get it now. And that brings me to, um, that you mentioned the hillside. You do have something here on the hillside, and, um, I guess s- some of the, um, uh, that, some of the, uh, I guess that committee that had some comments to make, participant comments and questions, they, they did mention about hillside preservation. And so my concern now is that the county is allowing, uh, residential homes to be built on the hillside, even though it's not part of, from my understanding, it's not part of our hillside ordinance, because you know, there's a, a map that shows where, but they're building on top, so the residents are thinking that we're not adhering to our hillside ordinance, and so how are we going to, um, prevent housing? I mean, I mean, we communicating with the county that, hey, we have this hillside ordinance, but it's not doing us any good because you're allowing all this housing, and, and I've been noticing there's a lot more encroachment there. And so I really feel that we need to start having a dialogue with the county because I don't even, I don't even know if they think, I don't even know if they know that we have a house, uh, hillside ordinance, so there, there needs to be some, some type of communication with them, so.
I could speak to that a little bit. So yes, there is county land adjacent to our hillside land. And our hillside regulations do not apply to that land because it is out of our jurisdiction. However, the county has been good in, we call it like referring or sharing about projects that come through their pipeline. So we are aware of projects that are coming through adjacent to our lands. And we do always make the comment that we have our hillside regulations. Even though we can't force anybody to apply them outside of it, we do request and work with the county on trying to get, you know, as great of a design as possible. So that conversation does take place, but we are a bit limited from a legal regulatory perspective.
Yeah, you know, like there's a recent one, it's just out there, it's like an eyesore. And they even allowed lighting, like a trail of lighting in that. And in our hillside ordinance, we don't allow that. But yet they're allowing that. So I think we just need to have a more serious conversation. Or it just, it bothers me that, you know, they're just superseding our hillside ordinance, even though I know, I get it, they own that land. But I think we need to have a, maybe we need to have a conversation with our county board of supervisors on that. It's because, you know, that's defeating the whole purpose of having a hillside ordinance. So anyway, those are my thoughts. The other one you mentioned about an entertainment zone. I will be bringing that up at our announcements because I think we need to add that. Because even though we're saying it is part of our midtown plan, it's going to be incorporated into our midtown plan, well, I think. And so just to ensure that we put that on the radar, I'll be bringing it up in announcements. So anyway, that's all I had on this. But I think they did a really good job at streamline. I noticed that they also mentioned about streamlining some of the permits. Instead of, you know, really making it difficult for a permit, at least they're streamlining it. So that's good. Does anybody want to, oh, this is just information only, right?
Correct. It's a study session. So any feedback that you all have tonight would be really helpful for staff to incorporate as they bring back the final recommendations.
Now's your time to give some feedback. Okay. We have, oh, it's Barbado. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll follow the mayor's thought on the housing opportunity district. And, you know, the reason I'm asking that is I'm aware that from the last planning commission meeting, there was a recommendation by the staff to, and it was approved by planning commission for some amendments to to some neighborhood, commercial mixed-use, town center, and the Melpitas general plan. How is it related now while we are updating our zoning ordinance? If, you know, do they coincide with each other? Do they have to, is one within the other, things like that?
Yeah, I could share a little bit more about that. So the comprehensive zoning ordinance update is really focused on not necessarily doing an overhaul of the content, although there is some of that going on. It's trying to make it as user-friendly as possible and modernizing it. So it's really more of a reorganization. Whereas the other, the housing opportunity districts project has a specific goal in mind, which is to encourage housing in a mixed-use configuration on these sites to fulfill our housing element objectives and the general plan designation. So they have slightly, they have different purposes. We also, because we had already started the housing opportunity districts project, we kept that we're not touching the same zones as part of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update so as to not double any of the work.
Also, there will be no point in time that they cross because they're just parallel?
Yes, the only kind of overlap would be like citywide, some citywide standards that would be applicable to all zoning districts, but otherwise no overlap.
So Vice Mayor, if I may, there would be a potential place where they're crossed, which would be if the housing opportunity districts came before this body and were approved. Then because this is a reorganization of the code, the eventual final version that came to you would have those changes to those sections approved by this body incorporated into it. But they will not overlap in the sense of you can take, you'd be taking two independent actions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if I could just add something, I think will help clarify, please. I think we've tried to emphasize as part of the zoning update project that the housing opportunity district's effort is separate because we often would receive comments in public meetings that were about the housing opportunity districts and largely oppositional comments. And we wanted to clarify that we have separate meetings, we have a separate process for that. This is focused on the zoning ordinance update. However, I think it's important that we are clear that if the housing opportunity district package is eventually adopted, there would be a new zone, the neighborhood commercial mixed-use zone, and then modifications to the town center zone, which would eventually be adopted into the zoning ordinance. So that's where the overlap happens. But at this time, we've just, we've left the town center zone regulations as they are existing in the code. We're not proposing any changes to them now because that's, that work is being done through the housing opportunity district project. And the NCMU, the neighborhood commercial mixed-use zone, doesn't appear in our current draft zoning ordinance because, again, separate housing opportunity district work. If and when that's approved in whatever form, it will be incorporated eventually into this because there are, of course, zoning regulations associated with that. So it would come together, but for now they're on separate tracks, as Director Lee explained.
Okay, when they come together, when they intersect at some point, for assuming that HOD comes to the council and gets it approved. So at that time, it's going to intersect with the somewhere zoning ordinance. Will you come back and cater for these changes again later on? On zoning, particularly zoning?
So we've, what the draft that we have for the housing opportunity districts, we feel confident that once, if that project goes through, we wouldn't have to come back and change that again. We don't want to have to do that.
Okay, because even if there's changes in HOD, as you know, you recommend, we're not touching, we're not, there are changes that doesn't affect the current zonings that we have right now.
That's correct.
Or at least on the updated zoning ordinance. So we are revising and updating the HOD, but it will not eventually cause a rezoning of a certain kind of area into another.
No, it will not. But in the end, they are all amendments to the zoning ordinance. So the final product after both projects, they will both be part of the zoning ordinance.
Right, part of the, my thought is, you know, I mean, my, just my concern, which I think you have reassured is whatever we're going to do, approve the HOD, it will not change particular zonings as a consequence. Let's say it will not change a commercial to residential because I think the, one of the HOD is the mixed-use. Then you don't need to change the particular zone to do a mixed-use residential.
If I'm understanding correctly, it will only make changes to the zones, the NCMU and the town center? All the other zones will remain untouched through the HODs?
Okay, so it's kind of changing that particular spot.
Yes. No, it's not an overlay, but we've like pieced it off of, it's like its own project because it's focused on a couple of zoning districts.
So to be clear, so let's say the NCMU is on a purely commercial. The HOD will change that particular parcel located in a commercial into a mixed-use residential?
Yes, that's correct. But the general plan already allows for mixed-use in all these zones. We are trying to make those zones consistent with what the general plan already designates them as. Because there's two layers of policy. There's the general plan, which has designations, and then the zoning implements the designations through zoning districts. So we are updating the zoning district. In some areas, yeah, it's most of the areas, they're zoned commercial. So we'd have to update those to be more mixed-use so that it fits with the general plan.
We update those to be more consistent with the general plan?
Yes.
And in doing so, like this HOD is coming about?
Yes. We're calling it HODs, which might be part of the confusion, but it's really just updating the zoning districts to match the general plan.
Have we revised the general plan recently or in the last few years?
Yes, we adopted it in 2021.
Twenty twenty-one.
An update.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? And we have Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Directly, I've mentioned this before with City Manager Thomas. You know, we have business owners here in Melpitas that has issues with, you know, navigating to the permit process. Is it possible that your department host quarterly meetings to give guidance to business owners, assist them in the process of getting the permit?
Yeah, I think we had something similar, a community development roundtable. I think that was a little bit more focused on maybe residential developers, from my understanding. But I think something like that, you know, would be a good idea. It just takes some staff time and resources. But yeah, I think those kinds of meetings may be focused on local businesses or business owners. Could be helpful, kind of an outreach or an educational component. We have created some resources that we think do help, like Development Review Handbook. ADU, the accessory dwelling unit toolkit's a little different, but the handbook, I think, is pretty helpful. Yeah, and I would think after the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, there could be some more outreach to just make sure that everybody's up to speed on these changes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess this was information only?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you.
We have one more. Sorry about that. Councilmember Lam.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is related to parking. One of your slides shows a single-family residence of less than nine hundred square feet, one space. And then for multifamily, under eleven hundred feet, it's only one space. Most of the families has more than one cars. So how do you accommodate more than one car? Do you have outside parking for that complex?
This one I will defer to Holly Pearson and our consultant to maybe share a little bit more of the rationale behind these parking standards.
Actually, Jen, if you would start with the response, please.
Sure, absolutely. So I think the slide is the one with the, it's the parking slide with the table that has some blue rose on it.
Earlier than this one, go back.
It's slide thirteen, maybe? Great. So this, to be clear, these are minimum number of parking spaces required. So this is the, at the very lowest level, the number of spaces that must be provided for a project to comply with the zoning ordinance. That does not mean a developer could not or would not provide more spaces if that was desirable for the tenants the developer's trying to attract or market to. So when we're looking at balancing efficient use of land, supporting transit use and providing more affordable housing, parking is a huge cost, a huge development cost that does get passed on to buyers and renters. So this is just providing a slightly reduced minimum number of parking spaces to provide flexibility for the market to be able to have more opportunity to respond in a way that meets the needs of both the city and the developer. Because if you do look at what is currently required for number of spaces, in some cases, it's, you know, pretty close or the same to what is being proposed. But I'm sorry, Holly, I don't know if you have something to add to that.
Just one thing to add. So for example, it may be if a developer were to choose to adhere to the minimum parking requirement for multifamily residences, one-bedroom units would have a minimum of 1.5 spaces per unit. So if you had ten units, you would have fifteen parking spaces. And it may be that there's one space deeded or dedicated to each unit and then five that a buyer could opt to purchase an additional parking space. It is expensive, as Jen noted, to provide parking. So by some residents or families, couples may have just one car. Some may choose to have a second car. So it just adds more flexibility. And in the long run, these incremental changes, the idea is that they would contribute also to the viability of transit and other alternative transportation options.
If I can also add a little bit, as we were talking about this, I just remembered a couple of things. I think for single-family residential areas, we don't have a ton of land zone for single-family residential where a developer would come in and build like ten or twenty units at a time. So you're actually, when we talk about single-family residences, I think we're looking at mostly homeowners, just people who own their homes and actually providing a little more flexibility, I think will generally be welcomed and beneficial to the homeowners because we've had some homes where they've tried to make improvements and the parking requirement was onerous to meet if their home is older. So I think for those homeowners, it'll work out beneficially. I think for the multifamily residential, that's where you can see a developer, you know, come in with the minimum parking ratios. However, there are like, I don't want to open a can of worms, but there are multiple layers of state, like state law, like reductions through state law. So one example is if you're within a half mile of transit, we actually can't, like what they call high-quality transit, we actually can't even impose minimum parking standards. I don't think as staff or as a city, we agree with that, but that's the state law. We also have affordable housing ordinance where if you meet the affordable housing ordinance for Melpitas, you will automatically be eligible for waivers and concessions. And through that, you can also request reduced parking. You can also, there's a separate ratio under state law that's lower than these requirements generally. So there are, although we have these requirements, there are many ways where developers for multifamily in particular can get reductions anyways. But we hope that having this standard will allow us to maintain that for any projects that could not take advantage of these, I guess, reductions.
Just to comment that that's part of taking away our local control. Who else? Is that it? Okay, all right. All right, so that was note, receipt and file. And so now leadership and support services.
Thank you, Mayor. For the next item, Finance Director Louse Kofressy Howe is available to discuss item thirteen, the FY twenty-four twenty-five second quarter financial status report for the quarter ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This item was on the agenda from two weeks ago on the consent calendar. However, there was a request at the council meeting to receive a presentation, so we deferred it to this week. And I'll turn it over to Director Kofressy Howe.
Good evening. If we could pull the presentation up, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers again. Okay, next slide. This is as, okay. Agenda, we will go through very quickly. It's first the general fund, we'll discuss, we'll discuss the financial status, revenues, expenditures, grants and donations, unanticipated expenditure reserve. We will then go into some detail on the enterprise funds, which are the water and sewer maintenance and operations. And then finally, the recommendation. This is effectively just a reiteration of what the presentation is, of the report is. This is a standard report that you receive every quarter, every three months, about six weeks after, six weeks or so after the quarter end. So this quarter represents October, November, December, twenty twenty-four. So this quarter represents October, November, December, twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. Okay, revenue, uh, this is the general fund, the financial status, and sort of I just want to focus on the fact that revenues and expenditures do not necessarily dive. Our expenditures are pretty much, you know, one-twelfth of each of the allocated, of the adopted and appropriated funds. Our expenditures is pretty much one-twelfth because it's salaries. Most of it were a service organization. Uh, revenue is patchy. So, for example, we get most of our property tax in December and April. Those of you who have own a home, that's pretty much when you make your payments, and we so see those fairly rapidly towards the end of the month. The county does the collection for us. We teeter, so we get a hundred percent of our property tax. That's an administrative fee that the county uh, that the county takes. As of December thirty first, we've received thirty-nine point three million. That's about a third of a hun- of the uh, of the adopted, of the amended revenue budget that includes various appropriations for capital projects, um, retirement stabilization, economic incentives and library repairs. Uh, and then the F Y twenty four twenty five adopted budget, it anticipated a slight recovery in revenue from last year, and we've got an additional detailed slide in the following slides. If next slide, please. And this is a, this is a busy slide, but this enables you to essentially look at the table that's represented once again in the item and some details about it. I'm not going to go over it in in a whole lot of detail. Um, but essentially, we're looking at our major uh, uh, revenue sources, which are property taxes, sales and use tax, uh, Measure F, franchise fees and hotel tax, and then license and permits as well. We've seen some ups, some downs. We've seen a particularly good up from recreation program revenues of six point nine percent. And we've also seen some really good returns regarding our investments. Uh, we've gotten actually doubled since last year. When you're looking at the comparables, we are comparing ourselves to last year's number. So the F Y twenty four twenty five numbers are being compared to the F Y twenty-three twenty-four numbers. So you're looking at the columns. It starts with the adopted budget. You've done some actions separately as a council throughout the year up to now. We've adjusted that budget to reflect those changes. The third column reflects the receipts to date. That is that twenty-nine point two percent that was called out in the prior slide. And then the outstanding favorable and unfavorable, effectively this says what are, how are we quote-unquote behind? Once again, I want to caution you, especially on revenues, revenues are bumpy. And then we have percentage of receipts, which that percentages of the uh, adjusted budget. And then we compare that to the twenty-three twenty-four receipts and the increase or decrease overall. Overall, our general fund at the bottom right-hand col- column is always the one you, I always look at when I'm looking at a document. What's the bottom? What's the right-hand side? It's an overall three point four percent increase. If you could go back one, I believe there's a Councilmember, Councilmember Lam is being recognized.
Yeah, on the property tax.
Yes, sir.
Um. Uh, hold on, uh, can you go back?
You're on slide five, please. Back two, please. On, there you go.
Yeah, on the public tax, as you point out, uh, we pay in uh November, December timeframe and also March and April timeframe. Uh, so I'm looking at December thirty first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, is that the half year of, or or is that the full year or the half years?
It's the half year that would represent the half year.
Okay, if it is half year, why are we getting only eight millions and then um, outstanding is forty-one million?
We may not have seen the whole, um, it it is collected in December, December tenth, if I remember right. And we may not see that until January. You're right, that we may not actually see that receipt of property tax until January or so.
Oh, I see.
So even though we pay in April, we may not see it until May. But it is, it is bumpy. We see the majority of it in those two months. It is very bumpy.
I see.
So there's a timing, that's a timing difference. This is, this is why this partic- this particular half-year review is sort of challenging because you're really not looking at you, you, you really need to look at another three months. You'll see the, you'll see the first half of the property tax revenues.
So even though the county collects it on December tenth, but we don't see it until the next, the following month.
Probably to the following month.
Okay, that's, that's the reason. Okay.
Don't forgive me, I I misspoke. They collect in December, we, we, they, you pay in December and we collect in January, the subsequent month. So it's, it takes about a month. Think about it. If people paid the December tenth, it takes a little while.
Okay. And then that eight point three million is whoever paid earlier, then we see it earlier.
We may. Some money comes early, but not a significant amount. Most people pay right on top.
Okay. Got it.
Next slide, please. The general fund expenditures is is pretty straightforward. This is done by departments. Once again, similar columns. It includes a hundred and thirty-eight point five million appropriation and carryover adjustments uh, totaling three point one million in encumbrances and amendments. And once again, these are council-approved um, amendments to year, and then we've used about fifty-four point three percent, which is roughly about the the amount that we should have used, we're about halfway through the year. And the columns, once again, to walk you through it, F Y twenty four twenty-five, the first column is the adopted, second column is the adjusted. Um, the expend, and those are budget numbers, the expenditure to date, which is the five seventy-eight, if I'm looking at the city attorney, for example, now. And encumbrance, those are carryover encumbrances or current encumbrances that are, that are for contracts or or purchase orders that we have executed already. The total of the wide-to-date expenditure encumbrances. Um, and then it's a percentage of the adjusted budget, uh, and then comparing us to last year. And so, for example, we have a fifty-four percent collection rate under the expenditure rate through halfway through the year, which is a little bit ahead. But we we expect that to even up by the end of the year. Please go back. And if yeah.
There's a rule, um, label non-departmental.
I'm sorry, which, non-departmental?
Yeah.
Uh, non-departmental, oh gosh, you always ask me this. Hang on a second. Let me be clear about it. So that's uh, non-departmental is is items that are not specific to any one department. It's vacation, leave cash outs, benefit administration fees, self-funded unemployment insurance, supplies and contractual services such as centralized copier costs for city hall, utility payments and citywide tuition reimbursement. And a sewer and treatment plant may, well, not here because that's in an enterprise fund. And I can refer you to page two ninety-nine in your F Y twenty four twenty-five budget book, and that fully describes what that is. Also, the big chunk of that is debt service. So that's not attributable to any one single department. So we have a, we pay our debt, outstanding debt, so we pay both principal and interest. That's a big, that's a big portion of it.
I see. That's a lot, seven million dollars.
Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you turn off, uh, William, are you done?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Luz.
Yes, ma'am.
On this expenditure, I'm looking at the adopted budget of twenty-four twenty-five.
Yes.
Column one, I mean, column two, and the adjusted budget. I've noticed that all of them went up, except for, except for non-departmental expenditure. And a couple of them are the same.
Okay.
All of them are up. Uh, I mean, three of them are the same. Is that the trend? Is that how, why you have to make an amendment in the mid-year?
Yeah, yeah, the mid, the mid, we have to make an adjustment the mid-year, and you'll see that in the next item.
I know, but, but does that tell us that we're not, we're not projecting or forecasting?
If you, if you recall, when you last saw this, you're going to be, see a fairly significant increase in our actuarial charges for our other post-employment benefits that we have no choice about enacting. We have to pay those, those expenditures, and it's about, it's over slightly over half a million, if I remember right.
No, but what I'm saying is, if if we adopt a budget, we assume that we're close to at least close to ninety percent correct. But the way I see this is almost, almost all of them are, went up. Except for like one, two, three, four that are, eh, one went down. Okay, but the the rest are, went up. We must be I, I, what I'm trying to say is, we have to do a better forecasting.
I I will, I will look at that in in more detail, but that's, that's where I can immediately see where the additional costs are. I'm also looking at that three point three million, those transfers in and out. And that may not have been, uh, that may not have been there before. So we will look at that, and we will bring us some, uh, some more information back to camps.
Okay, so that's something we, we should note. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Director Luz.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. Anyone else would like to make a comment, comments on this? I see William Lamb, you're like studious, you know, just like, um, are you any, any more comments? And Councilmember Chua, do you, I used to have, you have? Okay, uh, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I think we still have some slides to cover.
We do have some slides. Let's go ahead and finish. And then we have grants and donations. We have two small ones, relatively small ones. They're roughly about thirty thousand in total. One for a Polypus Breast Partnership Grant, and then one for the Santa Clara County Public Health Department for Healthy Cities Program. Uh, next slide, please. Well, the use of unanticipated expenditure reserve. Those are two items related to our Measure F and Measure J, um, advanced, um, items. And so dollars for those were used, uh, for that very successful measure. Uh, next slide, please. Enterprise funds reviews. This is the sewer and the water maintenance review. So effectively, these are standard, these are enterprise funds, they stand alone, they have to balance. These are business, these are business, similar to business. And so these are just essentially the revenues and expenditures. It's of interest for the fact that the water contracts and the wastewater contracts are encumbered, that encumbrance is recorded in the first. You have a chart that's an attachment, I believe it's Attachment C, to your item. And then, next slide, please. And then effectively, there is no policy action attached to this. This is simply a review of the F Y twenty-four twenty-five quarterly financial status report for the quarter ended December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and that's all that is. So unless there are any more questions? Are there any more? We have, uh, Councilmember Lam.
See. Can you go back to one of the slides showing, um, department, each department's expenses? Um, are those including, uh, the salaries and, uh?
Yes.
Um, okay. Do we has a breakdown of any overtimes of the salaries? Like, um, standard regular salary and overtime salaries?
We provide to the council every other week a, uh, a report on overtime.
But I'm, I'm trying to figure, um, what are the overtime expenses during the quarter?
We don't generally break this out for this summary level review. So we don't generally, we have that information, of course, because we've made those payments, but we don't generally break it out for this, this, um, this high-level presentation for the council.
Okay, what, okay, why don't you finish the rest of the presentation and ask you separate question on the, the overtime?
Yeah, uh, we've, the, the presentation is finished, sir.
Oh, okay, um, then um, can you pull up um, couple of the overtime reports?
I could pull those up, but I'm, I'm not quite sure what questions you're going, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I just want to say the overtime reports aren't part of today's agenda packet, um, so, and and aren't part of this specific report. We could definitely answer questions about overtime, but we don't have, the overtime reports are not part of today's agenda packet.
So you're finishing all the presentations today?
Uh, I'm, I'm finishing this one, item thirteen.
Oh, okay, item thirteen.
Which is?
Councilmember, we would be happy to, you know, we we do provide those um, overtime reports on a bi-weekly basis to you and the rest of the city council. We'd be happy to sit down. And I know we've provided you some additional information. We'd be happy to sit down and kind of go through them with you and talk about the philosophy of each department and answer any questions that you have.
I do want to pull up the, at this couple of, like, um, for sample, Sept- September, October timeframe uh, overtime reports that you send to us.
Council, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Councilmember, thank you for the question. You know, tonight's agenda item, there's definitely overtime included in the expenditures, and so we definitely appreciate the question, and we can, we can talk, and we have some of the directors here as well and online, if you have questions for specific departments about overtime. But we don't have, um, as part of this specific agenda item, we don't include those specific overtime reports in the packet. Um, and so we don't have them ready to pull up tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have tonight, generically about overtime, and then we'd be happy to meet with you and to walk through those reports as well.
Without pulling up the report, it's harder for us to, well, um, I, I have cleaned out of the, some of the reports. But, um, I'd like um, the staff to look at also, so we can ask questions.
Agreed, Councilmember. I I would just say that those, this, those overtime reports, um, on, you know, which specific staff members had how much overtime in each period, we send those to you, and then, because we send those to you to generate conversation, and if you have any specific questions, because want you, we want you to be aware. But this specific agenda item is a, um, you know, summary of where we are at fiscally at the end of December, twenty twenty four. Um, and is not intended to get in the details of specific staff members' names and who is doing what overtime, but we definitely want to, you know, answer any questions that you have and and continue, can, happy to continue this discussion with you. We'd, we could schedule a briefing with you if you'd like.
Okay, why don't I ask a general questions then? Um, all of the, um, expenditures, uh, for salaries, um, how many millions are we spending on, or how much in general, how much are we spending on overtime pay?
For this period, I cannot give you that number because I'm not prepared to do that, but we can provide that number separately to the city manager for this period.
So we can get that to you after tonight as a follow-up, and the, and we would provide to the rest of the city council as well. So the question, I just, to understand your question, Councilmember Lam, so we're looking at the total expenditures, um, on personnel through December, and you want to, you're, you want to know how much of that is on overtime, correct? Okay, we will get you that info, we will get the mayor and city council that information as a follow-up from this evening.
So are you okay with that, uh, Councilmember Lam? Or you want to ask more questions?
Well, I have, um, quite a bit of question on, um, overtime expenses, uh, but you are not able to pull up, uh, the reports.
Councilmember, I would say that, um, that we, we definitely want to get, we want, we want to get as much. that we, we definitely want to get, we want, we want to get as much information to you as you need. Um, you know, the mayor and council, um, and you're heading into a budget season as well. And so there's going to be a lot of discussion and decisions regarding, you know, adopting next year's budget. And so we want to make sure we get all the answers we can to you on, that you have on overtime in particular. Um, and it's just not something that is part of tonight's specific agenda item to dive into overtime specifically. That's why we're not prepared, um, and we don't, to discuss it tonight, but we can definitely brief you offline and you may have more questions as we proceed in this upcoming budget process and the study sessions that we're going to have in April and May.
Okay. I think, uh, I think all of us are, uh, interested in, in overtime, what departments are, are having overtime. So that would be good for you to bring that information back to us.
Thank you, we will prefer, we will prepare information and we'll provide that to the mayor and council, um, uh, in the next handful of, uh, next, you know, this month. We'll, we'll provide that to all the mayor and council so that you can have that information handy as we, um, continue discussions in this budget process.
I do want to emphasize that you already have that information through the biweekly reports that we give you. So we will give you that, that same information to you again, but that, that information is already provided to you.
Thank you.
But the report has provided to us, but it doesn't mean we understand the report. Uh, that's why we ask questions.
Of cour- of course, it, it's always helpful to have specific questions because I, you know, for us, we, we look at the report one way, you may have very, as you did and we've already explained, we've already provided you some responses. So we're very open to this, but, but again, we need to understand the questions that you're going to ask us so we can have the appropriate people in the room.
Well, that's why I asked to pull up at least, uh, one report, so we can ask some questions on it.
So, so again, that's not part of this, this is a quarterly summary that includes that embedded in it is all that overtime of those, those week, biweekly reports that you get, so we're not prepared at this point to pull that item up, it's not on the agenda. But again, I, I, we want to emphasize that we want to answer any questions that you have. But we just need to be prepared to do so and have the proper people in the room. So what I'm hearing you say is we will bring back a separate item, not from this, this is just a review.
Yeah, yeah, we will, yeah, we will definitely, um, as an informational memo or an email to all mayor and city council, provide a summary of the reports that we provided to you already on overtime and we'll get that to you in the next few weeks. Um, and then we could follow up with specific briefings and meetings and as much information as you'd like to discuss, we can, we can talk to you. Um, and then you may have more things you want to bring up later on that as well, so.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that, you know, we're, we, you know, some of us ask more, you know, diligent questions because, um, you know, it, the bottom line is, you know, we're in a structural deficit. We want to make sure that we spend the taxpayers' money wisely. We want to be responsible stewards of taxpayers' money, so we want to make, get the, make sure that we take care of our, our staff, make sure that we make, just, we just want to make sure that everything is lined up, that we don't, um, you know, I guess, how would I say it, that we're making sure that we, we're not being wasteful. That's, to me, for that me, that's my whole thing, I just don't want to be wasteful.
Yeah, we agree and we appreciate the, really appreciate the questions actually and we will definitely get you that information and refer for future discussions and briefings.
Can we have?
Uh, you have more?
As a next, um, discussion item? Of the next, uh, city council meeting?
Well, Councilmember Lamb, my, my recommendation would be, you know, this is an update on expenditures at the end of the quarter. We do have a lot of items, um, agendas in the future meetings for the mayor and city council. We will get you the information, we will have a handful, uh, two, three, two, a couple of bud, council budget study sessions as we prepare for next fiscal year's budget. There's an opportunity in those meetings to bring up budget-related questions as well. Um, we don't, um, right now have on our work plan a specific, um, agenda item planned for just discussing overtime. And if, um, if that was a request to council, it's something that could be brought up during announcements and we can look at prioritizing that. However, um, I don't want to, I don't think, I think the best thing for us to do is give you that information. And then, um, this can come up again during the budget study sessions.
I think we got lots of, um, overtime reports already, but we got most of the informations. I just want to dive into it and then get some answers.
Right, could I suggest, Councilmember, that we can provide you that information and then we sit down with you and walk through the details and then see what the next steps are after that based on the questions that you have? I agree with what the mayor brought up as well, this is really important as fiscal stewards of, as stewards of the residents' funding.
So is, how many, how many, uh, more, uh, budget study sessions will we be having?
At least two.
We're having at least two.
Maybe, maybe more depending on how, you know.
Generally, you just have one more, but we're going to have at least two more.
When's the next one? When's the projected next one?
Uh, I think we have.
The first of April.
It's a good one.
Roughly.
And, and we can have more than the two if it fits necessary.
We can have as many.
To dive into any specific.
Many as you wish with the direction of the council.
Correct.
Okay, okay, I think that's probably the way to go.
It is, I will, if, if, with all due respect, it's helpful to have this, these questions in advance so we can prepare. So we don't have sort of challenging conversa, it's not that we don't have the information, we want to share the information, but we want to make sure that it's accurate, because this is a public meeting. And so I want to be careful whenever we're speaking to not, the council and the public, that we're providing the information that's accurate and exactly what you need. So it's always helpful and I appreciate getting any, any and all questions. So it's helpful for us to understand what you're, frankly, what your thinking is. But for me, it's helpful.
I agree.
Okay, I think we have, Council, Vice Mayor, what about you?
I agree too, but I, I share, you know, yes, last on the topic, I share your concern. Uh, I receive, uh, those reports, I will make it, uh, on the announcement to at least have a brief, uh, on that. It's alarming, there's a lot of overtime to start with, going back. I agree with you, so in the announcement, I'm going to ask, uh, a report or a presentation, probably top three or top four of the departments who break the most overtime and then have an explanation on that.
Yeah, I think, and, and I, I am going to address one, one, one thing and we're, we're actually going to address it in the next item. I do want to point out that eh, eh, the fire department does have a lot of overtime, but I want to remind folks that much of that overtime is refunded. Because it's, it's, um, and I, I will go, we'll talk a little bit more about it in item number fourteen.
We'll do, we'll, we'll do in, in, uh, a right, uh, prepared, uh, conversation. You're right, it's the fire department. All right, going back to, uh, the, the report, I'll, I'll do that in the announcement. So it would be helpful, uh, to understand, uh, uh, see we have the adopted, we have the adjusted, and we have the expenditure on each, uh, uh, different, uh, departments, right, throughout, uh, the, the last quarter report. So it would be, uh, good to have, uh, information on, of the breakdowns on the total expenditures which were, uh, the basis of the adjustments, right, like it, I think one of, I mean, a department had, uh, uh, a deficiency of five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand there and that. So it would be, uh, good for us to know, uh, what's the breakdown, is this part of, uh, a compensation, is this part of a project for a certain department, is this part of overtime? Things like that, so, so we understand, and this will be very helpful, you know, as, as we, uh, go through the budget cycle. Uh, which of these are necessary, which are these are something that we can shave off, which are these we need to continue? So if you look at the chart, uh, then you will understand what I'm talking about.
So, so Alice has pulled up the detail which you'll actually be seeing in the next presentation, but go ahead, Alice.
Good evening, um, Alice Verch, Budget Manager. Um, so just to go back to the, the, the adopted versus the adjusted. In this report, this is only going to show, this is not going to show what's in mid-year. This is going to show what we adopted in, um, June twenty twenty four. It's going to include carryover encumbrances, so contracts that were encumbered in twenty three, twenty four. Those are added to the budget in the adjusted column as well as the, um, I A F F contract that we did back in November, which was nine hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars approximately. And then the Kone contract that was approved by council in January, uh, five hundred and twenty one thousand. So those, those are what's causing that adopted budget column to increase to the adjusted budget column. Um, those are council actions, the I A F F and the Kone contract where council approved adjustments to the co, to their budgets. Um, and then the carryover encumbrances, just it, it, it actually balances between the adjusted and the encumbrance column. Um, we would carry it over and then we would show it as an expense in the encumbrance column, so.
Yeah, we will take your, your, your request and add another column to demonstrate the, um, to demonstrate the adjustments and, and we will, as we've done in the mid-year and you'll see how we've done that, we will direct you to the actions that council, that council took.
Yeah, that's a good information, you know, uh, thank you Alice for that, uh, but you mentioned, but, uh, what I'm seeing here as, uh, expenditure is, uh, by department, city attorney spent five seventy eight thousand, so things like that. So if it would be, uh, a good information for us as we consider the budget, you know, uh, that column for expenditure, I understand the carryover, but which is part of the, the expenditure that resulted on the adjusted budget, but it would be nice to see, uh, how much of those tens or hundreds of thousand went to what? Is it some from a carryover, is it from I A F F, is it from a purchase, break it down?
We can demonstrate that through using, use, using the columns and some footnotes, it's going to look really busy both in the item and any presentation, but we'll provide you that information, we will let us know if you need more.
And if there's trending, then maybe that's a basis of a policy consideration for the council, so let's, let's have that information.
Of course.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else, any more comments? Okay, all right, then let's move on to item fourteen, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, um, Finance Director Luz Capressi-Hau, um, is still at the podium for our last item for this evening, which is a discussion of the mid-year budget and I'll turn it over to, and this again was on the consent calendar for two, this is on, it was on, um, council meeting for two weeks ago, but council wanted a, um, presentation, so we pushed it to this meeting for that presentation.
All right, so, so, good evening, thanks again, uh, item number fourteen, the FY twenty four, twenty five mid-year report.
Sorry, um, to go back, I don't think we took public comment on the last item.
Oh, that's right, we didn't, okay, uh, is there a public, any public comment?
I always, uh, mention the term contingency because of the encumbrance. If you combine the, the expenditures and encumbrance, then reflect it to what we had in the twenty three, twenty four. That's why the big increase is there, as, uh, some of you men, uh, know this. So in other words, even, we cannot dig out the expenditures and encumbrance of the last one. But seeing that, adding the encumbrance and the, uh, expenditure compared to the last one, then that will be the difference, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, is there anyone else that would like to come and say a few words on that item, item thirteen? So, okay, seeing then we'll move on to item fourteen from the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, as I mentioned, item fourteen, Finance Director Luz Capressi-Hau is here for the presentation of the FY twenty four, twenty five mid-year report.
Okay, good evening, let's go through this presentation. All right, the agenda, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's very straightforward, general fund. I thought I'd also talk a little bit about why we do mid-year reports and then the recommended amendments for general fund, revenue expenditures and the enterprise funds. And then we'll talk about the reserves a little bit and then a recommendation summary. So if we could go to the next slide, I'm not going to spend too much time on this because you've already seen it. This was actually in your last presentation a little bit differently. But effectively, the financial status is presented through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Next slide please, I'm going to spend a little bit more time here because I really want folks to understand that we have certain budgetary principles that we stick to. We adopt a conservative approach with a focus on fiscal sustainability. We continue fiscal discipline to preserve the general fund. We maintain a balanced budget and adequate reserves, we maintain assertive cost management practices and we stay on track and recommend rebalancing in line with current trends. So the mid-year, the purpose of the mid-year is really to do a rebalancing. And effectively, it implements budget adjustments to the general fund and selects special and capital funds to align projected revenues and expenditures based on the estimates that we provided you when you adopted the budget back in June twenty twenty four. We're making some adjustments to those estimates based on the first half fiscal year performance. We acknowledge various revenue sources that we actually have gotten in, in hand. We address any updated cost projections. We also implement some sort of necessary technical adjustments, you, these are the, the five dollar, the ten dollar, the small adjustments. Just puts monies in the right place. And then we also take actions on allocating funding for a limited number of projects supported by set, special or capital funds. Next slide please. All right, so once again, this is, this is also in your agenda report, this level of detail, the same title, this is just summarized in a slightly different way. Uh, we are now making, uh, revenues and, and again, I'm going to point you back to, uh, the adopted budget, the FY twenty four, twenty five, that was at one thirty eight point four seven five, seven hundred. We made some adjustments as Alice referred to, that five twenty one zero six one refers to the Kony, uh, library contract. That's for the critical library repairs, you adopted that, uh, through council action on January seventh, I believe. And then the use of reserves, this use of reserves is strictly tied to the action that you took in November to fund the, um, firefighters' M O A. And so this is effectively, we are looking at, that there are very small proposed amendments. There's one for ninety five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, that's for charges for service, that's recreation fees. They're expecting to bring in twenty seven thousand dollars original, eh, eh, in an additional under, um, charges for services, one, two, three, four, five, six line down on the table, at ninety five, eight fifty. And the contract class revenues are coming in roughly about four percent higher than expected. And then yeah, so just to recommend an increase in contract services, just to reflect, basically to reflect demand for those, for those services. Then there's the after the bell A T B program. This is a partnership with the M U S D, the Munip, Munip, Nopitas Unified School District to transport students to South Co- Col- 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 I never say.
Crackle Leach.
Thank you, keeps telling me some way I'll get, someday I'll get it, Cr- Crackle, never mind, that school, nah, give up. Uh, recreational facility, these are direct costs for student transportation. They are simply advanced by the city and fully passed on to the customers through program fees. It fully offset any proposed increase that you'll see on the next slide for a cost and drivers and bus fuel, so.
I have a question on that.
Can we come back?
Cost recovery on that, you know, like showing how much we made and how much we spent?
Yep.
Is, is it on there?
Uh, you'll see the cost, the, that, that is the cost recovery. That's part of the, see under the ninety five, eight fifty, those are charges for service. Part of it is the twenty seven thousand, the recreation fees, and the other part of it is the after bell program. So if you add those two numbers together, you, together you get ninety five thousand eight hundred and fifty. So what we're doing is that line that says charges for service, that ninety five thousand eight fifty, we're breaking it up into the two categories, recreation fees and the after the bell program.
But I guess what I'm asking is, how much, how much money do we spend on, on providing those services? You know, like how much staff time or how much do we pay for staff?
That's going to be on the next slide.
Oh, that, okay, okay.
Uh, because right now we're talking about, and then there's the intergovernmental revenues and essentially this represents the fire department revenues. Essentially for all the monies that we're getting back from the state of California through the mutual aid contract that, uh, general, just about every municipality has signed. And this is recognized as fire department revenue for reimbursable overtime, vehicle and equipment costs and any administrative support related to that fire mutual aid. No, that's, that, that slide is below the chart. It's a lot of information. I wanted to get it all on one slide, so it is right below the table.
And so, uh, I was informed that of another idea of, um, some of those, you know, when they do mutual aid? When they do mu, when they do mutual aid, I guess the state reimburses us. And then they get us, and then there's another pot that they ask for, it's a surplus.
I'm not sure what that would be.
And then, um, so the recommendation was to create a enterprise fund, so that way they could put that surplus, that money that was surplus in that little fund. So that way it won't, it won't, you won't put it in the general fund and then by the time they get it, I mean, sometimes I don't know if they'll get it, but I, I don't know, just be trying to simplify things to make it better. So what, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts are, is that an enterprise, that true representation of an enterprise fund is they pay for hundred percent of those expense, of their expenses. And my, in the fire department spends a whole lot more than one point seven million dollars. So their entire budget, I think just on salaries alone, is somewhere in the thirty three, thirty four million. So I think their overall budget is about forty million. So to be a true enterprise fund, they would have to be bringing in rev, similar to our sewer and our water.
Yeah, well, maybe that's not the right word. Maybe it's a, just a pot, surplus pot, I don't know.
I, but effectively, we're reimbursing the general fund for monies that we would have to pay. We would be paying it, well, we would be paying them for being here. I, I'm, I'm not a fan of that, and, and the reason I'm not a fan of it is because it's money that's general fund.
Even if it's a surplus, like it's extra?
Uh, it's, it's not, again, it's not really extra. Because we're, they're, they're not revenue, they're not generating revenue. They're using our, it's our staff doing work for other organizations. It's not really surplus. It's money to come back to the general fund. It's difficult to understand, we, we've got a lot of different, what I keep calling white envelopes. And we keep sort of dedicating, sort of allocating separate monies for, for this, that, and the other. And really, the money should come, be coming from the general fund.
Please, maybe, um, Councilmember Chua can explain it better than me, because or maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The way I understand it, because of the mutual aid, aid program. We, when we help outside the city, we get, we, we get everything, like labor, you know, F T Es, labor, um, overtime, everything else. And part of the mutual aid agreement is there is a, like an incentive. Like, ah, okay, that's the word I'm using. Then so the incentive is given to the firefighters who went out and helped the, the other cities. And recently, they were able to increase that incentive. And there's, um, there's a surplus, like the mayor said. So is there a way we can put that surplus to be dedicated to the firefighters? And I don't know yet the policy on how to use that surplus. I know for my thinking, it can't be used for any F T Es. It could be used for, like, based on a policy that we might enact. It could be some, hmm, vehicles, some trucks, so anything related to the firefighters. Do you see it?
Yeah, I, no, I really, I do understand what you're talking about, but, but effectively, we already have a waterfall in place for how we allocate funds to particular budget contingency, stabilization funds, artificial turf. We have this very complex waterfall in place for allocating monies. And I, I'm just, for me, it becomes very difficult in, in managing funds overall if we have need for those dollars. The other thing is, is it's not an enterprise fund. It, the, the, the fire department is not an enterprise fund. They're fully funded, pretty much by the general fund. So the monies that we get back, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the concept of surplus. I'd like to see how they're calculating those numbers, but I don't believe it's a surplus. We get paid, we get reimbursed for overtime, we get reimbursed for the vehicle and equipment costs, and we get reimbursed for administrative support.
Mayor, may I, may, may I interject? Um, so I do want to make sure that our discussion keeps focused on the, um, this particular item and pulling up information about it to make sure that we do not pre-discuss any policy that may be subsequently proposed.
It's the intergovernmental, it's here.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to what, and add to what was, add to the discussion a little bit, is just we need to be, you know, very, haven't, we haven't fully analyzed what you're bringing up at all, and I want to be clear, but I, and, and as Finance Director Louse Kerfresi Howe says, we would need to analyze it more. However, just want to be very careful and considerate as we're heading into some pretty challenging budget times as a city and as an organization. That we kind of continue to look at all, all our different, different general fund eligible revenue sources and how they can help us balance our budget as we move forward. And so, uh, if we were to lock up certain revenue sources that would limit our options as we move forward. And just wanted to add that to the discussion, and it sounds like it may be something we'll be talking about again.
We, yeah, we can, we can table this and discuss it later.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good idea. If you could continue, Ms. Kerfresi.
Thank you. Uh, this is the other side.
Uh, Mayor, that you, you wanted, so, so let me go directly to, once again, let's walk you through the budget adjustments that you made. That nine sixty seven, five twelve, plus that four thirty five, one oh eight, is equivalent to that five thirty four on the, uh, five thirty two on the prior page. Essentially, what we did, uh, this, so the salaries is the I A F F. Um, and I'm looking at the beast, the second column, explaining to you the budget adjustments that you already made through council action through January twenty third, twenty twenty five. So salaries there is the nine sixty seven, five twelve, plus the four thirty five, one oh eight, equals on the prior page, the five thirty two, which is the I A F F M O A that was approved in November. And then, of course, the five twenty one zero six one represents the Coney, Coney Library. So then you have now an amended budget, and then you have what we are proposing for the midyear. And so, starting from the top, the salaries, the one million four hundred eighty five dollars and two hundred and fourteen. That salary is five hundred and eighty five, two fourteen for longevity pay and compensation adjustments, once again, in line with the I A F F agreement. And then overtime, this is the expense side of the reimbursement that we get. Um, it's nine hundred thousand dollars, and this is really to better match actual overtime costs for mutual aid during fire, wildfire season and other events. And we've collected a significant portion of that money. So I'm going to move ahead. Uh, benefits, no, no, sorry. I won't use the word move ahead again. Um, benefits that is increasing by five thirty four, eight twenty eight. We have no choice about this. This is the other employment benefits per the latest actuarial report. Those numbers do move. They don't always move as much, but those numbers generally do move during the year. And then services and supplies, this is the two sixty three, eight fifty, that's on the third line of your charter. If you're looking at the proposed midyear, the outline section. Um, maintenance supplies, a hundred fifty thousand for operational repairs. Contractual services is a hundred thirteen thousand eight fifty for increased demand in recreation community services. These are, once again, services that are needed. And then, um, the City Manager's Office for Enhancing Video Content, Ensuring Effective Engagement and Communications Within the Community. Yes, sir. Oh. I, I, I can't.
That's too many Heatheran.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Councilmember Lam.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of questions on benefits. Um, is that including the retirement benefits?
That's the other post-employment benefits, that's retiree healthcare. That's retiree healthcare. The folks that have retired from the city of Milpitas.
Okay.
We pay, we contribute to their healthcare. So that's, that's based on the calculation of actuarial. So it's current and future. We don't have any choice about paying this.
Okay.
And whatsoever.
So past, present, and future?
Present, future.
Present, future.
It's an actuar, it's based on an actuarial report. If somebody has left the city of Milpitas but has not retired yet, we still have to put money away for the, for their future unemployment benefits.
People who retire from Milpitas?
They may, they may have left, so this represents both people who have retired from Milpitas, people who have not, who have left but not retired from Milpitas but have vested in Milpitas. And we owe them, we will owe them in the future of benefits. So we're paying for future benefits.
And then for services and supplies, uh, what kind of services do you mean?
Part of, part of that represents, uh, the sixty eight thousand, hang on a second, I'm pulling some information up.
This is twenty six million.
So the sixty eight, uh, the, which, the two hundred sixty three thousand eight hundred and fifty?
No, twenty six million for the year, twenty six, point five million.
It's in the adopted F Y twenty four twenty five column, the total budget for the year.
That represents everything that we, all the actions.
And then, um, that's.
We have a, a, a large variety of contractual services. We have planning, you just heard from them a little bit ago. We have people who help us with our audits. We have people who help us with design.
Oh, I see, contract too.
Yeah, contracts, yeah, contracts.
Okay.
We pay for our water and utilities, things like that, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's a lot of money.
Any other questions or we can advance to the next slide, uh, Mayor? I don't want to be calling on folks. It's not appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to just clear my questions before you move on.
Of course.
Looking at the proposed midyear amendment, so salaries, one four, eight five, two one four, that we can't really do much because that's part of the longevity and the benefits. We, you know, we have.
That's fulfilling the, that's fulfilling the commitments.
That is a hard dollar, that's expenditure. So we can't do anything about that. The next one is five thirty four, five hundred thirty four thousand, eight twenty eight. And and where is that at?
That is other post-employment benefits.
Pardon?
That's other post-employment benefits, and that's retiree.
I can't, I can't find it on the, I'm trying to do, I'm trying to do adding and subtracting and I can't find the.
Okay, if you look over to the proposed midyear, it's your second line.
No, the breakdown.
There, there is no breakdown.
I know, but the other ones have, have breakdown, I mean.
Well, that's one cost. That is the cost that goes to the general fund. There's no further breakdown of that cost.
Whose benefits is this? What?
These are retiree benefits. So these are benefits, we are contributing to retiree healthcare benefits.
And we did not forecast this?
We did forecast it. We have an outside expert who, who forecasts it. Sometimes the forecasts are not always right on. It really, once again, our actual reports change from year to year. Depends on who retired when, depends on, on what happened, it depends on many, many, many things, depends on healthcare costs. So these numbers are, take all that into effect, along with the age of our current cohort, takes into account any folks who have no longer with us. So it just really takes into account what our, our, our population, our retirement population looks like, and then does a calculation every year.
But we pretty much know who's going to retire, right? I mean, we can, we can.
We, we don't know who's going to retire. We, we only know when somebody's going to retire, when they tell us that they're going to retire. And we don't know if, when people have, a really good example, somebody's been here for five years, they vest and they move on. We have no information about that person's retirement schedule, none whatsoever. And so we base it on age, what they should, what their retirement would be, once again, an actuarial report. Um, it's a very complicated one, I can bring it to you, but it takes a while to learn how to read it.
I understand.
Yeah, but it's essentially based on, on what do Milpitas people look like? And when do we think they retire? And when that retires is, what do you think their health needs are going to be? And so, yeah.
I, I still look at the police department, because to me, they have a good succession plan and pretty much they can kind of, I think, you know, that's my take.
But this, this includes everybody who's.
I know, I understand.
Been retired or, or go, or was gone from the city. It's, it's current.
Is there a way we can look back and say, the last three years, this is how much benefits that we needed to amend our budget with? I'm trying to see a trend, like, like twenty twenty five, this, this is the amendment. Twenty four, how much did we amend based on the benefits? So it gives us an idea, pretty much how, how close we are. We're trying to get to the numbers, closer to the numbers, that's all, yeah. Okay, so the last one is two six three, eight fifty, and that's under services and supplies. So this is maintenance supplies for the park streets. That's okay. The other one is the thirteen thousand community, recreation and community service for new classes.
It's twenty thousand.
One hundred and thirteen thousand, I'm sorry.
A hundred and thirteen thousand. Let me break down that number for you. There's twenty thousand, remember we talked about an increase of four percent in the prior slide of revenues? And there's a twenty thou, and it's bringing in twenty seven thousand dollars. They need twenty thousand to deliver those services, so there's a seven thousand dollar profit, for lack of a better word. Okay, then there, after the school, after the bell busing, which is, um, zero, it's a net zero. It's sixty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty against the revenues of sixty eight thousand eight hundred and fifty, which are the riders of the bus pay when they get on. And then there is twenty five thousand for video services. And that's for enhancing our video content. It's ensuring effective communications and engagement within the community.
I, I don't agree with that video thing. So, but it's not broken down here, I mean, you know.
So I just want to remind all the council members that, uh, if we hit, if we stay at eleven o'clock, we have to have a motion to continue, so.
Oh, I see. Okay, so, uh, my take on this hundred and thirteen thousand, eight fifty, and that's part of the after the bell program. Why are we, why, why is it servicing the Milpitas Unified School District only?
I mean, if, if, if Renee's on.
Yeah, she's available online.
Yeah, I'll defer to that, because she has more history, obviously, much more history than I do, so.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Councilmember Chua, to answer your question. The after the bell program overall, services Milpitas students, Milpitas residents from anywhere. Um, for the transportation services, largely it is serving the Milpitas Unified School District schools. When the state required the school district to offer different times and extended care, um, it was a option to continue a more affordable after-school program for those students and their families to continue that, um, after twenty twenty two. So we have seventy students from three different schools that are transported to the South Cracolisi facility, uh, for the hundred and eighty days that they're in school.
How many?
We also have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Go ahead, please.
No, we, we have onsite program. No, we, we have, um, onsite programs and class, uh, after-the-bell programs at four of the other, um, Milpitas Unified Schools. So we're, we offer programs to seven of the ten elementary schools. The, some of the private schools have their own, um, after-school programs that they operate as well. And other schools have YMCA, so there's a variety of, um, opportunities. Ours happens to be one of the lowest cost in the city right now, most affordable.
I, I've seen it done in other facilities that some, something like this can be taken over by an organization without using our, our FTEs, if you will. Um, and also make it like, i- i- it's to me, if we can find a, hmm, just organizations that are doing this, companies that are doing this already.
Are you, are you talking about subcontracting or something?
Yeah, subcontract, subcontract it, we're, we're not getting any money, they just take over the service for us. They, they, they do the work, and then it frees up our own, uh, FTEs. So I think we need a feasibility study for this, um.
Uh, so the request, the mid-year request tonight is for the transportation MOU, and that is sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And that is to finish out the year of transportation for existing and running programs.
And that, finish out the fiscal, the school, the current school.
Correct, the current fiscal year, which ends, um, early June.
But I have here sixty-eight, I mean, I, one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand. That's what it says here.
One-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty is for three different things. One is the after-the-bell busing, which is sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty, twenty thousand for an increase in our contract class budget to accommodate current demand, which brings in twenty-seven-thousand dollars. The last twenty-five-thousand dollars is a request from the city manager's office for video content.
Okay. Uh, that, thank you, Director Renee.
Sure.
That's all, that's all my question for now, thank you, Director Luz.
So, can, before you move on, so, um, so you broke it down to three different, um, so can, you said it was, you've mentioned the word affordable. I mean, how many, is it, are all the students is, uh, for, is it for affordability subsidized?
Um, the after-the-bell program, um, is affordable. The item that's tonight for mid-year is the transportation cost, which picks up the students, seventy students at their home schools, and tracks, transports them safely to the Sal Crackalisi facility, where they're then, uh, dropped off with city staff, and then parents, uh, pick them up by six PM that evening.
But, okay, so it's not for students that can't afford, uh, program services? It's for anybody?
Um, it's not specifically to transport, uh, students who are in low-income housing, um, or are in low-income households, excuse me. However, um, those students could be part of our Milpitas Assistance Program, but it is not a requirement that they be enrolled in the Milpitas Assistance Program to take advantage of it.
Everybody. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering, I, I think, uh, I like the feasibility study, you know, to look into that. Um, yeah, it's just, um, I, I'm wondering, why isn't the school district, uh, doing a shared matching? You know, you see that other cities do matching. So anyway, yeah, let's look into that, thank you. The feasibility. Councilmember Lynn, hand her hand, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Do, I, I just want to mention, we, we can provide further information on after-the-bell and the, the revenues that we generate versus the costs, um, as part of this budget process to the mayor and city council. We won't have time for a full detailed feasibility study in the next, you know, prior to the upcoming budget process, but we can definitely provide further information on revenues and costs and, and more information on the program to you, as part of the, for your consideration.
Yeah, because we, we do provide a lot of services, uh, crossing, crossing guards, we pay a hundred percent of that, so. Anyway, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, I forgot my question now. Anyway. Five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand benefits increase. Could it be the workers' comms cases settlement? No?
No, this is specific and clearly tied to retiree.
Retiree health benefits.
That's it. It's, it's, there's no more breakdown, there's nothing else. I can provide you, I will be very happy to provide you the, it's very complex, it's, it's, it's a statistical, it's actual aerial work and it's really, it's financial, yeah, it's, it's complex, we can provide you the numbers, but effectively it's an estimate. And once again, they look at it again, say, oh, you know, something you need to contribute a little more.
Okay. So where in the financial statements here that reflects the, uh, workers' comp?
Workers' comp cases?
Yes.
Uh, workers' comp cases would be under these very large categories, um, under benefits.
Okay.
It seems odd, but it's, it's where it would be.
Under benefits.
Yeah, it wouldn't be under, and part of it would be under services, but it would be the services providers, but it would be under benefits. We also have, are you asking about the settlement of our cases?
Yes.
We do have a reserve that we, what we go into, and that is separate and distinct from our operating account. But our ongoing workers' compensation payments are in two places, one is in benefits. That's what, that's the percentage that we pay to cover for workers' compensation, insur- insurance excess and any excess insurance we have. And then for the services, the, the third-party administrator for those services.
Right, this is why when I saw benefits with the four, five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, uh, and that's the increase, that's why I asked.
That's the, that's the increase, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it, it is, it's a benefit.
Okay, so that's where it sits.
Yeah.
Okay, but when I ask you is, could that be the case? You go, no.
No, that's, that's, I, I cannot say it often enough. That's five-thirty-four-eight-twenty-eight is one-hundred percent retiree healthcare, there's nothing more to it.
All right. That's my question, thank you.
I'm sorry.
You say how long I had to wait just to ask that question?
I, I'm. Leave it to Mayor Montana. Councilmember Lynn.
Yes, I, I kinda want to echo, uh, what the mayor was just said, uh, I, I, can you educate me a little bit, uh, why the after-bell program is not picked up by MUSD? And then also the crossing guard, um, i- is that traditional, we've been paying for it? Or why MUSD is not picking up the tab?
I can't provide history, I will refer to the city, the active.
Assistant city manager.
City manager and to Director Lawrence, and I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, and, and Chief Hernandez can come up and provide, maybe first to come up and provide some history on the crossing guard program, and then, um, Director Lorenson can provide some more information on after the bell.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council Director Hernandez, serving as your, uh, police chief. In regards to the crossing guard program, back in the seventies, um, it was a shared responsibility between the school district, um, where they were providing volunteers at adjacent crosswalks to the schools. Sometime in the late seventies, early eighties, the city adopted the crossing guard program. It was ran through the police department, and we employed part-time employees for, for decades. When COVID, um, occurred, we had a huge loss of crossing guards, and it was no longer sustainable for the police department to provide that service. We had to put police officers and CSOs in many of the intersections. And it wasn't money well-spent, it was impacting our ability to respond to calls for service, and it was very expensive for them to do that. So at council's direction, after a, um, administrative study, uh, council went with a third-party service that was about two years ago, about two years ago. Um, there are opportunities for cost savings within the crossing guard program. So there, in that presentation to council two years ago, um, there's criteria that's set forth by, uh, traffic, traffic criteria. It identified twenty-seven locations in the city of Milpitas requiring a guard. The other way that locations get added is council direction, and then my discretion as a police chief, because we recognize a community safety issue. So there are forty-three locations that we're paying for. So there's an opportunity to shrink the program if we wanted to stay strict to the traffic criteria. But for council to make that decision, you'd have to weigh the, probably the input of the community to see if we want to keep it the size that it is, right? The other opportunity for cost savings is shared costs with the school district. It's, um, there's a variety of models out there. Some cities do have a shared cost model with their school districts. Some cities fund it themselves, and some school districts fund it themselves. So there's a wide range specifically in Santa Clara County, which was presented to council two years ago. There's several models out there for council to consider if it's your will to change our current program.
Yeah, that's something that can be, um, we're gonna have a lot of discussions on, uh, all of our existing programs as part of the upcoming council budget study sessions for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so.
Me, I just. We have a, oh, are you done? Oh, hold on, let me, let me, let me go back to you.
Yeah, the second part was, you said it's answered by Dawa To.
Correct, and I forget the specifics, but you had questions for the after-the-bell program from Director Lorenson.
Transportation, why isn't MUSD picking up the tab?
Um, as, as Director Lorenson will say, we, it is cost recovery, right, Renee?
Yes, the, the school district is providing the drivers and the buses, and, uh, we are paying for the cost of the driver hours and, or hour rather, and then the cost for fuel. And the, um, student families that are using the transportation service are paying for it. That one-hundred percent recovery. Um, as your earlier question about after-the-bell in general, the school district sites that we are at, we use the space, um, at no cost. And then we collect and we provide the staffing. So it is.
Feasibility study.
And we will, we will definitely follow up, as I mentioned before, with some more detail on, on the program.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn, let me have a. Oops, hit the wrong person.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Wait, is it me? Okay. So with the after-school program, uh, or after-the-bell, uh, I do know that it is a hundred percent recover. And if, if we are going to change and not continue this, um, please reach out to the school district and discuss with them. Because again, this is the children in our city that we are providing the service to. So that's just my comment, thank you.
If, if I may, the item tonight is for the transportation and not the program itself. So the sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty is for the transportation costs agreement that we have with the school district to provide the transportation for seventy students.
I want to add, oh, just so I'll add, we have a few more slides too, but.
I, I just, I, I, it. I just want to have this question or a statement, maybe. There is other funds, there is a request for two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five for mobile stage replacement. That's the stage that we use to, when we have, um, events. Uh, I, it has, this stage I was told, mentioned to me that it was broken June twenty-twenty-third.
Yes, and that is on the next slide, so. But no, that's great, that advances us.
Okay, but unless you can, unless you convince me, I, I'm not gonna approve that.
Okay.
We haven't used it for a year, and it got broken, so. We have other, and I know you told me that we got insurance money. I would rather put that insurance money back to the, to the replacement fund, just in case a truck, fire truck, or police car needs some replacement. That's my take. Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Director Luz.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Chua, next, anyone else? So, um, okay.
Should we, should we, would you like us to finish the slides, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I am getting a little concerned about time if we, cause we have the item about.
Let's finish the slides, because we only have fifteen minutes.
Okay, so next slide, please. This summarizes, once again, enterprise and other funds. That enterprise funds, that's sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. That's the, once again, retiree, uh, healthcare, other post-employment benefits. You don't have any choice. Uh, the equipment replacement fund, uh, that's a request to, a recommended amendment to require, increase up by three-fifty-six. Eighty thousand of that is for vector truck rental, that's basically vacuum sewers. And then, uh, the two-seventy-five-eight-eight-five, which is part of it, is coming from the equipment replacement fund, obviously. And part of that equipment replacement fund is the insurance payment that we got back, that's two-seventy-five-eight-eight-five. And then we have some, effectively net-zero transactions of, for, uh, that are in the capital improvement program. I won't read through them all for it, for, basically, because of time. But if you have any particular questions on any one of them, we can respond to those.
Maybe if no questions, we just keep going on the presentation.
And then let us keep going. And, and this is our recommended amendment to reserves to cover that shortfall. We are proposing to, um, decrease, um, take, uh, two-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty, split the difference, split the two, it's five-hundred-three-thousand-zero-four-two, and split it between contingency reserve and budget stabilization reserve equally, leaving a balance from if you would, somebody's got a cursor up, if they want to point to unassigned to general fund contingency reserve over to the right, the right listing, the under unassigned, it's sort of the middle of the slide. There are two funds, it's general fund contingency reserve, that's twenty-point-eight under the FY twenty-four column. And then this next line is the budget stabilization reserve, and that is again twenty-point-eight. And this is effectively an early use of our estimated vacancy savings, we've done an estimate. It is a rough estimate of estimated, of, of estimated vacancy sa- savings as a reminder. Uh, those vacancy savings are our waterfall policy that the city council adopts every year. That first falls over to the general fund contingency and the budget stabilization contingency equally. And so those revenues essentially we're requesting is an early use of the, of those dollars. And so right now, we're estimating through December twenty-twenty-four, we're looking at roughly one-point-five-million dollars in vacancy savings. And then with that, let's keep going to the next slide. The next slide really is just the recommendation, and I'm not gonna re- repeat it either. You have it both in front of you and on your agenda report. And with that, it's entertain questions. If you could leave a recommendation up, please. So this is to approve this, um, summary amendment? This presentation, or are you just showing, it's just for information? Um, and do the resolution approving the mid-year amendments. And then also because we are changing salaries because of that longevity, it does affect future salaries, we also have to adopt a resolution amending our, our classifications and salary table. So those are the three, there's only two actions. You've already done the review, we've talked about it. Now we're taking two actions through resolution. The first one is to adopt the FY twenty-four, twenty-five mid-year budget amendments, as we've just gone through earlier this evening. Okay, Councilmember Chua, you have your.
Yeah. Uh, like I said before, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the mobile stage replacement of two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-five. I'm not in favor of the mobile stage replacement of two hundred seventy five thousand eight hundred eighty five. Also, uh, the video requests, I would make that five thousand. And like I said, and for the after the bell, I would like to see a feasibility study, I'm hoping by next year. We, we are not, we have other options. That's all I'm saying. And and I don't see. Oh, that's on the CIP. The request for replacement of iPads, iPhones, then, and.
Correct, um, Councilmember Chua, that's part of the CIP recommendations for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So we can discuss that with you when we come back. And, and per council's request, we will be coming back to you on the CIP at some point prior to requesting you adopt it. So likely in April at some point, and we will, we will, and we'll get you, um, some information on that request prior to that meeting as well.
Aye, and that's including the firefighter request for one point eight fifty million dollars for the vehicle.
Correct, the replacement of the firefighter, oh, sorry, the urban search and rescue vehicle is not part of this current mid-year request tonight. It would be, um, something we will discuss with you in the budget process coming up.
Okay, that's, uh, so I only have two items then. Thank you.
Mayor, would, Mayor, would you mind if I just, uh, quickly, um, uh, address, um, Councilmember Chua's, if, items? Yes, thank you, Councilmember Chua. So on the stage, definitely heard, heard you. I just wanted to mention that we pay about four thousand or forty one hundred dollars or forty two hundred dollars each time we rent the stage. And so if it is not approved for purchase, we will just continue to rent in the meantime when we need the stage. And we can again discuss that with you. If that is not approved tonight, we can always discuss the, um, need for that with council at a future time. On the videos, um, the videos that are included in the budget include, um, videos that promote Malpitas as a city. Our events such as Holy Festival, Earth Day, um, and Fourth of July, um, as well. And so, um, if we don't have the funding for those, we may not be doing those videos. It also has, um, our funding for the videos for the mayor's state of the city address as well. And so we would have to, if the budget is reduced from the request, we will have to take a look at, um, cutting most of these videos out. And and then, um, on the feasibility study, I, I already addressed that before. We can, we'll definitely provide more information after the bell to council in the very near future for your consideration as you talk about future budget processes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? We have a vice mayor.
All right. When this was, uh, brief to me, and I believe, uh, in the preliminary not presentation, uh, in, informing the council regarding this mid-year budget. I, I believe, uh, I, at that time, uh, you know, at least, uh, on, on, on my suggestion, uh, come back with, uh, sources of buckets where we can get, uh, the the, uh, the, amend the, the mid-year budget, right, the five hundred three thousand. If you look, uh, you know, if you go back to the slide and then go back to the graph of the resolution, uh, the slide, it didn't mention that it came, it will be coming from, uh, the general fund, but if you look at the resolution, it's coming in two buckets.
It, it, right, it, it is a general fund and has two sub-buckets between it. One of them is, and if we could put up slide eight, please. One of them is a general fund contingency reserve and the other one is the budget stabilization reserve.
Both general fund, so.
This, this entire page, uh, page eight is all general fund buckets.
Right, so, so that's my point, right? When I, uh, first presented with this issue, uh, said, hey, let's see where we can, uh, scrub more of the funds. Just a mid-year budget, we're dipping on reserves, how much more when we go to the structural deficit? What I'm saying is, you know, is this the most that we can find to, to fund, uh, the mid-year deficit?
At this point, ye- yes, because we have not this, these are savings that we, we know we're going to realize. So the, the, the reason we've chosen these two buckets is because these are the first two buckets in the waterfall that get replenished. So we would, in, if we have, if you're looking at the third bu- bu- on that item, you're looking at the early use of estimated vacancy savings. We expect to get at least one point five million vacancy savings. That number is known all the way through December two thousand four, and actually it's a slight underestimate.
Right, so.
So.
It gets replaced.
We effectively are borrowing.
Borrowing and then it will go back later on.
So because the, yeah, because the other, the other ones, the, they're further down the waterfall. So those are, those two, those two are the first ones. If you look at our waterfall, I'll give you a page number in a minute. But, um, it, the first two that are replenished are those two funds. So effectively, we're borrowing from those funds early to get to the remainder of the year.
It's gonna be, uh, uh, it's gonna be put back anyway later.
It's going to be put back once we audit the numbers and we already know that we're gonna be saving at least one point five million.
This be the same reserve buckets? We will again consider when we are going to talk about our next budget cycle when we are projecting structural deficit.
Uh, along with other mechanisms as far as reductions in expenditures as you've given us direction to do.
Find any now, how could we find, uh, more later on?
We have not had time to do that for the mid-year, we just haven't. I've, I've got to be really honest with you. And we also want to bring back, again, if I'm gonna remind the council with all due respect, we asked for some time to really sort of review these, all of these costs and all of these programs and all of these activities. And we're doing this, what, what I would generally do in about a year and a half or two years, even with an organization of this size, we're doing in about three months. It's an extraordinary compact and compressed schedule. And I do get really concerned that we're going to bring to you some, some reductions. We're gonna bring you some, some choices to make. Because at the end of the day, the council makes those, those choices because you are the most informed about what the community needs are. Um, some of them are, you know, go ahead.
Um, we have reached eleven o'clock, so we need a motion if the business is to continue.
Would anyone like to make a motion to continue this or just, uh? Uh, maybe in, uh, finish by eleven thirty? Okay, make a motion? I make a motion that we continue till eleven thirty. Is there a second? Okay, let's call for the vote. Uh, Will, William?
Be- before we, uh, uh, vote on that, can we estimate that we're done in, at eleven thirty? Or is it more prudent to continue it on the next council meeting? Okay.
No, because, um.
Well, maybe at, at, maybe at eleven thirty, we can decide if we can continue it or not.
Okay, I'm.
Oh, what?
I, I'm.
You're with that, or you, or you tired?
No, I'm, I'm, it's not about being tired, it, huh? Because thirty minutes would, uh, be a, at least less than a dozen back and forth, somebody's gonna.
Continue?
Uh, just, this, it's, this is up to the mayor and council, definitely, it's obviously your choice. But I would say from the staff standpoint, Director Ha, Kharasi Ha just mentioned the tremendous amount of work the staff is doing to, to get ready for the budget study sessions for next fiscal year. And this, this, um.
I want to emphasize that it's not just the budget team, it's your directors, it's your staff. And I, 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 you know, I, I, we have to at some point in time.
I think you want direction now, you know.
Will be a challenge for us to continue to work on this in the meantime when we're trying to, um.
Some favor, say aye.
So we have to do a. We, we need to conduct a vote, Mayor.
Yes, I, I, I made a motion and it was seconded by.
Yes, you have a motion and a second, so you can just take the roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Vice.
Eleven thirty.
The motion is to continue the discussion tonight until eleven thirty P M.
Go ahead.
To eleven thirty? Perhaps we should continue on the next meeting.
But the problem is if you continue it, it puts a burden on staff and, you know, they got.
Done.
I think we should.
I, I have no more slides, we're just asking, answering, answering questions from the.
Wasting more time deciding.
Just say eleven thirty. Then we decide.
Let's go for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven thirty.
All right, calling for the vote, Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, continue.
I'm, I'm waiting for questions, I'm not saying a word, I'm done with my presentation.
So Vice Mayor Barbara Deal was on, had the floor, so if you can continue.
Yes. Now, the questions were answered, so it now becomes a comment and, and probably guidance, you know, uh, with this, uh, mid-year budget, uh, we're dipping in, uh, reserves. We're expecting a waterfall that it can come back. I'm just hoping that, uh, the funds come back, uh, just before we approve the, uh, next budget so that we can probably incorporate again, if you don't have any other, uh, ways to, to scrub funds, this same, uh, fund source. Otherwise, if it doesn't come back at the time that we approve the budget, if this is a source, then this will continue to drop.
So we need, we can provide you with an estimate by the time that we do the budget. And the reason that we provide you with the estimate is that we base our waterfall on audited numbers. Those audited numbers come to you in early December. So that's when we give you an absolute bottom line, dollars and cents number. We can provide you with an estimate. It's going to be water falling into both of those funds and any of course remaining. And, but we can do that when we bring back anything for adoption or anything for future discussions.
Okay.
But I just want to be sure, I will, just want to be real crystal clear that we're working off unaudited figures which are numbers.
I think the, 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 the bottom line for my, uh, point is that we're touching reserves just for the purpose of, uh, you know, making up with our mid-year budget. And which, you know, even if not, I'm a financial, uh, person, it's better to get it from another source than getting it from reserves, although it's gonna waterfall later on anyway. Because we will use these budgets later on, uh, on the structural deficit. So that's a thought.
Mm-hmm.
They want us to consider.
Yeah, you're just, uh, kicking the can down the road, so I, yeah, yeah, you know, that's why we need to, we need to get the bull by the horns and just tackle it now. And, 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 uh, the economy doesn't look very great now. I mean, we have all these tariffs that are really gonna impact. I, I'm just, I just think we need to be prepared, so I'm.
I, 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 I need to be really clear, I'm, I'm a pretty, I'm a fiscal conservative. And so I don't like using one-time monies either, but we don't have an option, given the fact that we haven't had an opportunity to really give a really good examination. I'm gonna stop talking because I'm taking time away from you all.
That's the scary part, you yourself says, hey, we don't have an option, we don't have a choice.
I, I, I don't have a choice because I don't haven't explored the options. I don't like to make recommendations that, uh, are cutting, cutting of services. Uh, because that to me is, is, is we are in business to provide services to our customers who are the most needy and our clients and our residents. And those are huge decisions, and that's why I always like to have them well researched.
Totally, we will be reviewing the services as part of the upcoming budget process as was requested at the last study session.
So.
We are, as long as we are able to afford that, I'll, I'll continue.
I'm with you.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Before, uh, eleven thirty? Okay, we have. Councilmember Lam.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, on, on the last things on the, um, on this agenda, is the fire, fire department's, uh, salary table. Uh, is, is this part of the approval or this is different?
No, it's the entire classifications and fa- and salary table. Every time you make any sort of change to salaries, which we are making by change, by the longevity, providing them the increase. And also, part of, part of the costs, the, the recommended costs were providing the longevity, which changes salary because that's based on, on, on a percentage. And also paying the unrepresented fire staff. So we're increasing their salaries. So this is a technical action that has to be taken every single time we make any sort of change to that classification salary table. So effectively, we've made a change, we've made changed salaries, so we have to make a change. It's a techni- it is, it is a completely and totally technical action.
I see. So it sounds like you're saying it's a done deal?
No, because you haven't approved it yet, it's not a done deal, the, you need to approve the, you need to adopt the resolution.
Then I, I, I don't understand why, but this is part of the, um, approval process?
If you make a change in salaries or classifications, there is a document that's, that is the latest document that's attached to this, this, to this, um, agenda report. And so we give you the updated salary classification and salary table. So we present to you what's.
I understand that part, but, um, I don't understand why is that part of the expand, uh, last quarter and mid-year, uh, expense?
It's part of the mid-year change because we made a change to unrepresented salaries as part of this action.
Oh, we already made a change?
It, this is the recommendation.
Council, Councilmember, I just want to add, as, a- after the fiscal, so the budget was adopted last June. And after that, we finalized the contract negotiations with I A F F. And so this adjusts, yeah, this adjusts the budget to reflect some of those changes.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam, and we have, uh, Councilmember Chua. Remember, we, our time is of the essence here.
Did we do public comment already?
No, not yet, I'm waiting to.
Yeah, I'll do the motion.
Okay, uh, public comment is open. Anyone from the public want to make any comments? We have Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you, it's really very difficult on all sides. Um, I'm in the public and I can sense like, uh, we wanna preserve or conserve our money. And we have revenues, we have, we have sources. Um, I think is, we really got, really have to have the conclusion. If we agree on the amendment, then there's a source. I'm, I'm not deciding for you guys. Uh, I think we, we should respond if, if needed because, uh, it's, uh, gonna be like circling anyway. I think, uh, you guys are doing great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor, and now we'll call for the public, uh, we are dead. I'm gonna ask if anybody else needs to talk.
Anybody? We have no additional public speaker, Greg.
All right. Uh, now, uh, we've already discussed this and that's one of two motion. Okay.
Motion thing.
Would you like to summarize, oh, I can summarize what I heard, the changes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, the, the two changes, um, that I heard, um, were both from Councilmember Chua. One is to remove the stage, uh, to, to remove the stage and then to reduce the video to five thousand dollars. And then I heard feasibility study on A T B, um, and, um, we, we definitely commit to providing further information as part of the budget process there. So those are the three things, remove the stage, reduce the video to five K and provide further information on after the bell.
And the, this, uh, and a comment on statistical analysis on, on one of three years of the actuarial report, yes, okay? And I think you asked for something.
Didn't you say a vehicle or something? Wasn't there a vehicle?
The CIP.
Those are, those are already discussed in the, gonna be discussed in the CIP, yes.
You asked for something, Mayor? You asked for something?
No, I just agree with you with the feasibility study.
There was also some discussion, not that I'm looking for work, but we also had some discussion from the M U S D and the, and crossing guards.
Okay.
So we didn't have definitive dis.
Are you?
So, the, the, let me, can I, can I just rephrase real quick? So on the crossing guard item, that's just something we will, we will already planning on, you know, we can, we can raise as part of our services during the upcoming budget process. So that I think the, uh, my summary would be, um, from what I heard, um, it would be to accept the staff recommendation. However, to remove the funding for the mobile stage, reduce. However, to remove the funding for the mobile stage, reduce the video from down to twenty, down to five thousand dollars. Provide further information on after the bell with a potential feasibility study in the future, as well as provide three years of the actuarial report information.
Okay, so it was moved by Councilmember Chua and seconded by Councilmember Leon. And so let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb. Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
I am an aye.
All right, so now we're, uh, we're, we still have time and now we'll, um. That no items are pulled from consent, so now we'll go to announcements and future agenda items. So city manager, do you have any announcements?
Real briefly, um, you're, should already have this on your calendars, but Women's History Month Flag Greenery Ceremony, hosted by Show Up in Love and Noreen's Dance Collaborative, is scheduled for this Friday at six o'clock at Caesar Chavez Plaza. And the Holy Festival, um, which, um, is scheduled for Saturday, March eighth, eleven o'clock at Cardoza Park.
Okay, thank you. Um, are, did you sign us up for the Silicon Valley State of the Economy?
Yes, we did, and if anybody is not, does not have it on the calendar for Friday mornings and is interested in attending, please get, um, let Alex Andrade know. It's Fri, this coming Friday morning.
Okay.
If anybody's not going and wants to attend, let Alex and I know immediately tonight or tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, I encourage all, you know, whoever hasn't, hasn't gone to go because it's really important, it's very informational. Is there anyone, any council members that want to make any announcements? We have Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Yes, I, I have two, mayor. Uh, I would request that staff will come back, uh, with our hiring activity for the council's consideration for next council meeting to see if it's another method uh, to, uh, help, uh, develop, I mean, help out in our analysis in the budget. Meaning, uh, what's in that pipeline, what's going on now? And and so that council, if presented, uh, will make a decision of whether or not we freeze hiring. We, uh, surgically look for priorities in the hiring information, I like that, that's the first one. The second one is, um, you know, this is from, uh, the concern about overtime. Uh, lately, not lately, we've been provided with overtime reports every two weeks. And, uh, we wanted to more understand, uh, how, why, and, um, you know, other information regarding overtimes, especially, uh, some departments that, uh, looks like every, uh, two weeks. We understand that, you know, there's, works needs to be done. Every two weeks has a constant, you know, over the last few months, constant, uh, uh, overtime requests that's amounting to, uh, you know, uh, several thousands of dollar. So we want to understand how each department as, as how we are limited to have that information so that we can understand and incorporate that in our policy with regards to, you know, to our workforce and with regards to, uh, the budget sessions that we're, we're going through. So for those two, I, I, I request for consensus to come back.
Take a roll call?
We'll take a roll call.
Before you vote, I'd just like to add a little, um, information to the hiring activity request. We definitely understand that, you know, as part of, we, as, on a regular basis, we always look at all the vacant positions we have and whether or not they need to be filled or not. And we're definitely taking a more concerted, concerted effort right now, um, in, in doing that. Um, when we will be discussing that more with you as this budget process unfolds. I, I can't commit right now that we would come back at the next council meeting. But, um, if you could let us regroup with staff on, on what, on, on the follow up, um, with the clear, um, expectation that we will be coming back and talking to you about it during this budget process. Because we understand why you're bringing it up and we, we need to talk about it.
You still want it on the, on the announcements?
Yes.
Okay, so let's take a roll call.
It can come back, uh, next council meeting, at least it comes back, uh, earlier while we, uh, talk about the budget.
Yes, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, we are planning an, an early April likely as our, um, next study session on the operating budget and that. And we can have this as part of that discussion at that time.
So in the meantime, are we going to hire people until it comes back?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor, well, actually, I don't know if that's. We are, we are currently hiring people, we are, um, you know, there's definitely a lot of positions, um, you know, whether they're public safety or utility, et cetera, that we need to continue to hire. But we, we are currently taking a very concerted look at this issue.
Okay.
So you're prioritizing and then are you going to let us know?
This isn't really prioritization if it's something we're already planning on coming back with.
Okay.
I, I think it's, I'm okay with it getting, you know, voted for prioritization of, as well, but it.
Okay, all right, so calling for consensus, Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Doesn't aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Another aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
No.
Mayor Montano.
Aye.
And then for the second item. Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Nay.
Mayor Montano.
Aye.
Um, anyone else have anything else? If not, I have one, uh, I'm going to put the, add the entertainment zone to put that on the, or Main Street. Put that as one of the items for discussion in the future.
Calling for consensus, Vice Mayor Barbara Diou.
Doesn't aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
I'm sure of what the item was. Something on Main Street.
Oh, entertainment zone, to revitalize Main Street.
Okay, aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Okay, well, that, um, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.